Good evening. I will call to order this evening's meeting of the Arvada City Council. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call. Here.
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Ferrey.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Excellent. This evening, we have need for two workshops. The first is our stormwater regulatory program, Chapter 50 of the municipal code updates and qualifying local program application. Who among the -- ah, please come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Very excited to be here tonight, even more excited to talk to you about the stormwater program. My name is Jake Moyer, stormwater administrator for the city of Arvada. And I'll just go ahead and get started. So, little bit of an overview of what we're going to go over tonight. Going to give you a bit of a background on the stormwater program, specifically stormwater regulation throughout Colorado, why we are proposing changes to our current municipal code, how that aligns with the strategic plan, some highlights over the specific code updates, kind of the bigger ones throughout the proposed proposed updates. I'm going to go over some proposed changes to our permit fees, more specifically, the site disturbance permit, which I'll cover later on in the presentation, the qualifying local program, and then next steps after this presentation. All right, so what is stormwater? Stormwater is going to be any, anything that falls from the sky, including rainfall, snowfall, which then carries, you know, really any pollutants down into the stream untreated. You can see by the diagram to the left here, we have our sanitary system and our stormwater system. So unlike the sanitary system, which, you know, flows into a treatment facility, the stormwater or the stormwater system really captures everything from the road, from houses, from development around, and carries that into the creeks untreated. I say that in quotes because I'll cover a little bit of how we identify that pollution in one of our program areas in this slide. So all of our regulation around stormwater quality is dictated from what's known as a municipal separate storm sewer system permit. Arvada, city of Arvada, has a Phase 2 general permit, and this is really delegated by the Environmental Protection Agency to the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, who then regulates that to the local jurisdiction, so city of Arvada being that. This program, which we manage in stormwater regulatory, is really made up of six different program areas, and I'll just give you kind of a highlight on each of those areas. So we cover public education, which is developing educational material around stormwater quality and distributing that to the public via website, brochures, news articles, et cetera, public outreach, which is participating in city events, providing booths and interactive materials. You may have seen us at one of the city events throughout. The construction oversight program, which I have highlighted here because that will be the majority of what I'm discussing tonight, which is inspecting and enforcing on active construction sites routinely related to temporary-permanent stormwater control measures, which I'll capture a little more. Really, we are inspecting construction sites to make sure that they are not polluting our stormwater system. Post-construction oversight, so with every development, there may be requirements around water quality. Really, this is just putting in permanent infrastructure that treats the water to certain standards before releasing it downstream and into our system. So currently, we have about 350 of those that we inspect routinely. Good housekeeping and pollution prevention. Really, what this means is we're inspecting all of our city facilities that have the potential to pollute our system, as well as training all of our municipal staff on proper stormwater best management practices. And then illicit discharge detection and elimination. This really covers any kind of spill, dumping, unlawful discharge into our system, allows us to come, report, track, and be able to enforce on those. All right, so why are we proposing these changes? Well, we want to improve the customer experiment or, sorry, experience and focus on areas of risk. We want to support our enforcement program. I'll cover that a little later on in the slides. We are also trying to address findings related to external and internal audits of the program. Back in 2019, our program was actually audited by the EPA and State Health Department, which did result in a few findings that we have addressed, but this was a limited audit, and it didn't really get into the nitty-gritty details of our municipal code. But in 2021, we conducted an internal audit of our program through outside consultants, who really just dug through all of our program materials, including municipal code, which did result in a couple kind of minor findings that were addressed, were addressing with these proposed revisions. And then applying to become a qualifying local program, which I have a whole slide on that, which I'll cover. So yes, the proposed stormwater code updates align with the council's strategic plan by optimizing city operations to improve customer experience, prioritizing practices that sustain a high quality of life for residents and businesses, and providing the community with a safe, resilient, and high-quality drainage system for full city build-out. Excuse me. So I'm going to cover our existing construction oversight program, just to give you an idea of where we're at currently. So right now, a city site disturbance permit is required for all projects that disturb 10,000 square feet or more. So any project that you come into the city and you're really exposing dirt that is an area of 10,000 square feet or more, you need to get a site disturbance permit through the city. Now, when you're approaching one acre or greater, you have to get a Colorado Department of Health and Environment stormwater construction permit, which is a separate permit through the Department of Health, but we, both permits kind of cover the same activities. We really have our site disturbance permit for the city so that we can be able to regulate what is required of our MS4 permit. This permit, sorry, I'll capture the rest of this. So when, when we require a Colorado CD-PHE permit, we also require a narrative stormwater management plan, which is really a report that covers any, anything and everything that could cause potential pollution throughout the project, as well as a permit certification with the site disturbance permit. So really, what that means is that when you come in, you have a project that's an acre or more, you need to get a city site disturbance permit as well as a CD-PHE stormwater construction permit. These permits require temporary control measures throughout the project to address run-on and runoff. So if you look at the pictures to the right, these are going to be our main examples of, you know, things that we're looking at throughout construction sites. Vehicle tracking on the top photo is one of the biggest ones throughout the city. It happens a lot throughout any construction site. We go in and just make sure that those sites are being managed to our standards, which is really ideally none of this happening, but of course, that's almost impossible. And then the bottom picture shows a silt fence, which is a perimeter control that's being overwhelmed, so that's just another thing that we go out and, and look at to make sure that they're not polluting the system. And this permit does remain active and enforceable until what's known as final stabilization, which was, is when 70% or more of the site is covered with vegetation. And then with this permit, so the site disturbance permit, a permit fee and escrow is applied based on the size of the project to account for review and inspections. So a couple of the highlights of what we're proposing with this ordinance are going to be changing that threshold for our permit from 10,000 square feet to a half acre. There's a couple different reasons for this, which I'll get into. Going back to our previous slide, we're trying to limit, we're trying to focus on risk, and when we get into sites that are 10,000 square feet or more, we're more dealing with kind of single-family extensions, kind of those lower priority projects that need, with, with our existing program, can still be addressed through other parts of our program, like the unlawful discharge, illicit discharge and detection program. But yeah, moving forward, we want to adjust that to a half acre. Permit fees are being removed from our city code and added to our public works fee schedule, which I can get into in later slides. There is also clear reference to enforcement provisions that apply to the entire chapter. This was something that was found with our audit, is that a lot of our chapter, really the enforcement language is only tied to a specific section, which is going to be the site disturbance permit. Well, the modifications make that language enforceable to the entire chapter so that all of our, our regulations are enforceable. Let's see, the possible fees related to compliance procedures, remediation, and municipal liens for non-compliance, this just kind of beefs up our enforcement abilities if needed. I do want to note here, our main goal is to seek voluntary compliance with every situation that, that we come across, but we do need to have some enforcement capabilities, not only to maintain our level of service, but also to comply with our municipal separate storm sewer system permit. We did add as well administrative appeals. In the event that a responsible party does want to repeal or appeal an enforcement action, they will be able to do so. Right-of-entry language was also added for municipal staff. We have many, many, many stormwater facilities throughout the city. Some of those are located within easements, so we're able to go out and inspect, but some of them are not, and we still need to be able to go inspect those. So this does give us a little bit of right-of-entry permissions. And then exemptions from certain discharges. So this goes with our illicit discharge program. There are some discharges laid out in our MS4 permit that are allowed to go into the storm system. These are going to be things like groundwater, irrigation flows, firefighting activities, stuff that's kind of like, we, we don't really have any avenue to enforce on those, so those are exempt.
Thank you. Quickly, Councilmember Marriott.
I have a question for you. Go back.
Oh, yeah.
So you talked about the administrative appeals process, and when I looked at that in the proposed code update, it, it essentially, the appeal, the administrative appeal is to the city manager, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So let's say I disagree with your assessment of something, and I appeal that to the city manager. How do I, if I disagree with that, then the next provision is district court would be the next appeal. But there's a big jump between an administrative look at it by a city manager and district court. Like, I don't think Rachel might know this, you can't walk into district court for less than 30 grand or something like that to decide a question like that. Hang on one sec. But it's also reasonable to assume that somebody who has a disagreement with you might say, gosh, isn't there somebody besides somebody who gets a paycheck from the city of Arvada who can look at this fairly? And I can give you a couple of examples, you know, some examples could be, one of our judges are a relief judge, I guess, they get a paycheck from the city of Arvada, but they're at least on the, on the judicial side. It could be we have a code compliance board or a building code advisory board. It could be from someone like that. Why do we not have something like, and this is probably not for you, Jacob, sorry, it's, I'm sure it's for, this is for Rachel. Why, why did we choose the, the appeal process that we chose? I mean, I, I know why we would choose it from our side because we want a dispense of these expeditiously and with, without trouble, but, but, you know, why, why did we not choose a process with a little bit more due process in my eyes for somebody, particularly somebody who has a small squabble, who feels like they just get, get strong-armed into doing whatever the city tells them to do?
So we wrote this particular provision, and my team can correct me if I'm wrong, but it, to line up with the way that we do a lot of other administrative hearings in the city. I can tell you, though, as a practical matter, we often do utilize our relief judges to come in as a delegate for the city manager to preside over these hearings. So it has more of a neutral feel that way, but also, we're not burdening city staff who, whose normal job is not to make judicial-like decisions on matters like this. So I think it, long story short, as a practical matter, we would probably bring in a hearing officer to preside over the administrative hearing.
Okay. What about a jury of their peers, so to speak, citizens who serve on a related board?
We've never done that before. We don't have any other provision in our code that would provide for something like that. Obviously, if council wants to direct us to look into that and create a new type of hearing procedure, we could do that, but I'm sure there would be a lot of costs around having those determinations. Plus, from the legal perspective, when we have a decision, this is the final decision of the city that would then be, as you pointed out, it would then go to district court. So the city has potential legal liability, depending on what that outcome is, under a 1068, or Colorado Rules for Civil Procedure 10684 case that a citizen could file. And so it is, I like the, having a hearing officer, an administrative hearing officer, who I can, who is accustomed to provide, to enforcing rules and doing so in a way that complies with the law. It would be really tough for us, well, it's, it's harder for us to do that with a board of citizens. So this would be similar, I think, to the pros and cons that we talked about with the Liquor Authority Board, and I guess I said we don't have a, we could create a new board, I suppose. Planning Commission does some decisions. Obviously, we have other citizen boards, so I want to make sure that I'm recognizing that here. But it is more legally solid for us to have the administrative hearing officer that doesn't have to be trained to provide that neutral sort of rule application as we would need to do with a citizen board.
Let me give you an example. This may not currently exist, but it existed for a long time, a decade or more, and that was that appeals of the International Property Maintenance Code. At one time, where, you know, the, the appeals process was to the chief building official, and if you could appeal that to the city manager or their delegate. And if you wanted to appeal that, you could appeal that to, at first, the Board of Adjustment, and then I believe the Planning Commission. May still be that way. I don't, I don't know. You would have to look that up. So it's not uncommon that we've done that in a, in a case where, you know, the, the council's desire was to give citizens or people who do business with the city proper due process, not just be on the yay, we're on this team and you're going to do what we say no matter what. I mean, in things like this, as Jacob probably knows, there can be differences of opinion, not black and white. Kind of some bunch of shades of gray, right?
Yeah.
And you have a lot of authority and a lot of latitude to say, that shade of gray makes it, that shade of gray doesn't make it. And it's wholly realistic for a property owner or a, or a contractor or someone like that to have a very different opinion, say, no, my shade of gray is good, I disagree with you. And I don't see anything that is, particularly, once you get to that impasse, I don't see anything in our process that kind of gives reasonable due process to someone on a small situation. I realize you can take it to district court and adjudicate it there, but nobody's going to adjudicate something really small, given the extreme cost and burden that a district court would cause. And it seems to me that this is one of those areas that in, in abundance of wanting to provide service to the citizens and, and due process to everybody, citizens and business people, that it might be appropriate to have one more step before it goes to district court. Or that step could be before the city managers, you know, before the city managers' appeal. But I think it's important for, when people have a disagreement with the city, that the city doesn't get to decide whether they're right or wrong, that citizens, their peers ought to decide whether they're right or wrong, at least have some hand in that. And in this process, it appears that they don't. So my recommendation would be that that section be changed to incorporate something like that. And you might do a little research on International Property Maintenance Code appeals and see how they're currently handled, and if they're not currently handled that way, when and why that was changed. But I don't think it's unusual, and I, and I think it would be providing the most appropriate service to the residents of Arvada. So anyway, my, my advice.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
How many times has there been an administrative hearing or issue with stormwater? I can speak to this, but not at the city of Arvada. I've had two experiences with this in my seven years in this field, both of which were incredibly severe violations, where pretty much an entire hill was carried through erosion into the nearby creek. And then, it was actually the same for, for both of those circumstances. So, but the, we're, and I, and I do really appreciate the, the questions and the outlook. I do want to say that we, if we're getting to this point, we've exhausted every other measure. As I said before, we always seek voluntary compliance. Our staff is out there talking with the superintendents, the foremans, everyone to make sure that we're on the same page when it comes to these things. So, but still, take, taken into consideration. So rare. I was just...
Rare. I, in my seven years here, I don't think that I've ever, I'm not aware that we've ever had one. So I assume you're too, we're at another organization?
Yeah, yeah, different organization.
Just making sure I'm lining up. But yeah, I, I am not aware that we've ever had that here.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with what you're proposing on the administrative hearing process. I don't think it needs to be changed, or I think the process that it is now sounds fine, especially if it's rare. We don't need another citizen board. We, the Liquor Authority is a good example. I think, I support what you guys are proposing. I'm not quite aligned with Councilmember Marriott on that one.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi, thank you so much for this. One of my jobs in my past history was stormwater. Worked a lot with Sandy McDonald. But there is a Colorado Stormwater Managers Group. Are you a part of that? And if so, is there an opportunity to maybe see what other agencies do?
Yeah, yeah. So we, city of Arvada is a part of the Colorado Stormwater Council. This is a coalition of all of the stormwater programs that are permitted through the state of Colorado, minus maybe five or so. So yeah, I've been a part of that for six years or so. We work very closely with the other jurisdictions to make sure that we're aligned on a lot of things related to stormwater, specifically permit compliance. We've had examples of bad actors in Colorado before, and it results in a lot of, of litigation and, and fiscal, yeah, fiscal issues. So, yeah. Does that answer your questions, Hori?
Well, I was just hoping that there was an opportunity, maybe, that you folks in the, on the council, share these kinds of things, like, hey, how do you handle administrative appeals in your jurisdiction?
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Thank you. I see no more lights. We may continue.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for the questions. They're really good questions. Okay, so I'm going to cover our updated impacts on our, our permits. So this is going to be the site disturbance permit that I discussed earlier. So on the left side, you'll see really spanning from 2019 and into 2023, the total active site disturbance permits throughout the city. And on the right-hand side, these are the numbers that are, sorry, on the left-hand side, so the left column is going to be the total site disturbance permits under our existing program. And on the right column, these are the total permits under our proposed program. So I just wanted to give you an idea of kind of the, the level of fluctuation that we would be seeing and the total amount of permits. And then the right table is going to show our new permits coming in, and this is our existing program versus our proposed program. So kind of give you those two levels of, of reference. And on the left side, if you're curious, that would be, you know, comparing existing versus proposed. That's a 13% decrease in total permits. I did want to say with this table as well, this, this includes all of our permits that are in our system. So these permits could be new, or they could be five years old, depending on, you know, where that construction project is at. And it's really hard to get stabilization in Colorado, so sometimes a lot of our permits span a couple years. And then the right side, that is going to be a 2% decrease in new permits coming in. So that's going back to 2019, really only a 2% decrease there.
Quickly, I see, just, just for the folks watching at home who may not be construction folks, could you just give a bit of an allegory about what 10,000 square feet versus a half an acre is?
Oh, yeah.
Perhaps how many square feet are in an acre?
Yeah, and I did actually cover that in the next slide here.
Oh, there we go.
I have a little, little asterisk there.
Perfect, thank you.
So yeah, one acre is 43,560 square feet.
Excellent. Councilmember Ferrey.
Oh, awesome.
Sorry. So my question is, why did you pick the half acre rather than an acre?
So the half acre is actually going back to collaborating with other jurisdictions. That is kind of what we've seen from our neighboring jurisdictions as far as when to require permitting. It's also kind of plays into the level of risk associated. So once you're hitting a half acre of total ground disturbance, then we kind of see that as more valuable for the city to go out and inspect and manage.
The state level is one acre.
Yeah.
Is that right? And so you said that the permits for the state and CDP, or CD-PHE and for the city are pretty much the same in what they're covering. So why is it that the city has a permitting process that's pretty much the exact same at the state level? And if we're adjusting it from 10,000 square feet to half an acre, why wouldn't we just stay at the same level as the state at one acre, just to make it easier for people who are developing and building in our cities?
Yeah. No, and it's a great question. So some of this plays into what I'll be talking about with the qualifying local program. We've had 10,000 square feet as a threshold for, really, I think prior, well, I think 2007 is when that was enacted. for, really, I think prior, well, I think 2007 is when that was enacted. I don't really know what that is based upon. But I can tell you, it is totally feasible to have a program where we just require permits at that acre threshold, in line with the state. However, we would still need a permit through the city, as well as a permit through the state. Really, the permit through the city is to make sure that we're complying with our MS4 permit requirements.
Okay.
And then the permit through the state is to make sure that you're complying with the state permit requires.
And so if we, that makes sense. And so if we were to move to one acre instead of half an acre, how much of a drop off would we see in terms of, you know, you said about a 13% decrease. So is it a big drop off of changing from half acre to an acre in terms of permits?
I would have to get back to you and run those numbers. I'm not sure. Yeah, it's hard to say how much of a, how much of a decrease that would be.
No problem. Yeah, I just, it seems like it would make sense and be easier for people developing if we were in line with the state. If they're an acre, maybe we'd be an acre, unless there's some fundamental reason not to. That's just how.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's really just that, that focus on risk. So, you know, doing this a lot, I've noticed, even when you're under an acre, and still disturbing like half acre to three quarters of an acre, if you're not managing your site appropriately, we're going to get a lot of calls into the city to make sure that they're, you know, managing their site properly. And it really is kind of a burden when we don't have permitting for it. Not to say it can't be done, but it's just, it's a little more streamlined when we have permitting, which enacts like routine inspections, follow-up enforcement. We kind of have a whole procedure around that thing. Yeah, when we're getting into issues like that, we have to expand resources a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to say on that, I imagine that the half acre is kind of a compromise between 10,000 square feet and an acre, because like you said, if we didn't have a way to even know that this work was being done without the permit, because we're the ones who get impacted if the site is not managed well. We're the ones who have to pay the increased fees and the wear and tear on infrastructure. The state doesn't pay for people being non-compliant under an acre, right? We have to pay for that kind of problem, those problems.
Yeah, if you're not covered under a state discharge permit, then yeah, that's correct.
Councilmember Davis?
So I'm assuming some of our neighbors don't have one acre lots being disturbed. They're actually smaller, the single-family homes, single-family dwellings. And if they're close to a waterway, and the discharge, the discharge goes into the waterway, we, and the city didn't know about it, we could be fined by the state, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so the half acre, it's, it is a compromise. I was hoping we could stay with the 10,000 feet, just because now we're at a point where we are infilling in brown fields. And some of those brown fields, we don't know what's under there until we bust the surface. And so I think it's important that if we have illicit discharges, or we get down to a place where there's a waterway or a spring underneath, and there's pollutions or pollutants, we could be held liable by the state.
Yeah.
And how much are those fines now per release?
They continue to increase. Yeah, yeah, it's quite a bit. I can tell you, the jurisdiction that was enforced on for their MS4 permit violations, it was in the millions. So, pretty significant amount. And yeah, we're always trying to find a balance between, you know, not overburdening, burdening the private property owner or the developer, versus protecting our surrounding residents in our system. I will say to your point, though, with the proposed ordinance changes, we do have language in there that really states that we can require a site disturbance permit for something less than a half acre, if it, if it's deemed necessary. So.
Please continue. Or Councilmember Marriott.
Right on the button.
I was going to ask you a question about this slide. Do you want to present it first?
Oh, sure. Yeah, gotcha. So yeah, as I said, site disturbance permit fees have not been updated since their inception in 2007. So on the left-hand side, you're going to see what is under our existing code right now. So this is under chapter 50 of municipal code. And the right-hand table is going to show what we're proposing. So obviously, we are making the change from square feet to acres. And then really starting and giving a lot of different thresholds on disturbance levels. So you can see, you know, half an acre to an acre, one to three acres, three to five acres. Really, why, why we did it this way is, this is the amount of time and resources that staff spends on these projects, both in the review process, and on, a little bit on the inspection side in the field. So these are really, you know, rough estimate numbers to try to recuperate those costs in a way from development, you know, previously with our application fees. So this last point here, assuming 36 new permits are averaged per year, the range of these changes is approximately 14,000 to $38,000. And this would be into Fund 44, which is the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. And we compare this to 2023, those total permit fees were almost $2,000. So it's a little bit of kind of development paying its way, but also laid out in a way where we try to add, you know, some balance there, separating it into different thresholds of disturbance levels. So.
Let me ask you two questions. You may have partially answered one. How much work did you do trying to decide exactly what it costs you to approve a permit and then inspect a permit in a simple case, an average case, and a, and a hard case?
Yeah.
To come up with these numbers, because it.
Yeah. Yeah, so through our permitting software, it becomes relatively easy to be able to pull all of the permits, and then separate that into, you know, the different types of permits that we're reviewing. But really, it was taking the average staff hourly rate, range, or wage, and then applying that to the amount of time that they would spend reviewing each of these projects, based on the size of project. And, yeah, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. And then for the inspection piece of it, which is the field inspection, that is our average wage, and then applied to one inspection in the field. So we're not like, we're not compiling these over the amounts of inspections that we'd have throughout the whole project. This would just be one inspection.
I'm shocked at the, at the significant cost increase of these. I mean, it's 800% kind of. I just want to point out that, you know, we talk endlessly up here about housing and affordability and affordable housing, and we've got to do something about this. And this is another action that would do the opposite of what we state as our number one goal, to make housing more, more affordable. That's not that much. I mean, you're hitting somebody for another $500. But by the time that moves through the chain to an end product, it's not $500 anymore, it's several thousand dollars. So I just want to make that, make that point, that if this is shooting from the hip and saying, how much would we like to get? Or what does other people, what do other folks charge? That we may be working against ourselves here. Or maybe we're not as serious about that goal as we say we are. I suspect that's probably a lot of it. But this is, once again, you know, the death by a thousand cuts of housing affordability. And as we gnash our teeth and complain, we never push back about stuff like this. So anyway, that's editorializing. Sorry, I didn't mean to lay that on you. But I do have a question, and that is, the resubmital fee seems punitive compared to what it used to be. So why is that?
Yeah, it really just goes into the staff time and the level of review that we have to do with some of these projects. So when we're collecting resubmital fees, really what that means is that we got, we've gone through the application for the site disturbance permit. And I will note here that when you're getting to the site disturbance permit phase, you've already gone through the development application phase. So really, all the plans that you submit under that site disturbance permit should be good to go. So if we're coming back and we have another resubmital, we're really just, we're taking in our staff's time to go in and review that. And then, yeah, yeah, that's, that's pretty much.
Okay.
Why that is, yeah.
How frequently do you get resubmittals?
Not frequently.
Like, one out of 10? One out of 100?
Maybe one out of, one out of 20, I'd say.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Councilmember Ambrose.
I was going to ask about the fee schedule here, that you have, you know, a much more increase of fees for the larger properties because of the impact that would have, right? And so, does this affect housing affordability? Do you find, like, you know, people who build luxury homes tend to be building on larger lots, and therefore incurring higher fees proportionate to the development project, versus people who are building affordable housing lots, which are smaller? Or does it not shake out that way?
I, I, I think any answer I would give you would be an assumption, and so I can definitely look into that. But yeah, really, all of our proposed fees are based on the project size, only because that results in a larger time for us to review that project. So our staff, as well as a longer time period that we're out there actually inspecting the site.
Yeah, I mean, if you go to your next slide, it kind of shows this principle at work, where you have a more, I guess, more of a luxury residence, because it's .75 acres for one home, with much higher fees. And then the fee schedule changes, and a .3 acres, which I assume would be a more affordable home, at a smaller size, would not be charged as much, because it's a smaller lot size. And then versus development, which would just have that much more impact on our systems. And so, a higher fees to assess, yeah.
Councilmember Davis?
Well, I commend staff on keeping these fees low. They're some of the lowest in the metro area, which is, it's pretty amazing. And then also, not having them change in decades. We are playing catch-up. And unfortunately, when we play catch-up, it looks like all of a sudden, we have an 800% increase in our rates. Had we been keeping up with the market, and letting the market drive the fee, we'd probably actually be quite a bit higher than this, because I know what they are in the city and county of Denver. And these are a fraction of those. So this is, I commend staff for keeping this low, so thank you.
Yeah, and thank you, Councilmember Davis. I forgot to add, with this slide presentation, that we did look at a lot of our surrounding jurisdictions to compare those fees. And this is all available upon request, if you would like. But yeah, that did go a lot into our assessment.
Thank you. Councilmember Pfeiffer? Nope. Okay, please continue.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so just wanted to provide some example projects for you. So this just kind of gives you an idea of the size of project, and what we would be proposing versus what we currently charge now. So we have the project on the left, which is three quarters of an acre. That existing permit fee is $50. That proposed fee would be $400. Again, really just trying to recuperate costs that city staff spent on review, and then inspection of the site. Next, we have Hidden Lake Home. This is .3 acres in size. The existing permit fee, like the previous, would be $50. Under our proposed program, that would be no fee at all, because they don't need a site disturbance permit. Probably didn't use the best example for this project, because it is right next to a lake. So that would come into play with, with our review. But just trying to give you an idea of, you know, the project size versus what, what we would propose. And then on the right here is the Trailstone Development, which we're all probably, you know, well-known of. This project is 196 acres in size. And under our existing program and permit, we charge them $125 total for their site disturbance permit. That proposed fee would be $1,050.
Mayor Potem, or?
Just curious if maybe the team knows. If you don't, Jacob, on the Trailstone Development, how many homes for the 196 acres?
I'm going to phone a friend.
I actually don't want to give you the wrong number of units. I'll look it up and provide it.
It's 650. 650 homes? Okay, thank you. It could be 630, but it's definitely in the mid-600s.
It's in the mid-600s, that's much I know. So.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, perfect. So next slide, I'm going to talk a little bit about our proposal to become a qualifying local program through the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. I will note that this is somewhat of a prestigious program, related to construction site stormwater management. And it would make Arvada the fourth jurisdiction to be a part of this program throughout the state. Other jurisdictions would be Lakewood, Golden, and Durango. Through this program, it eliminates the need for public and private development to obtain a state stormwater construction permit for all sites less than five acres. So that kind of plays into our, our threshold requirements for the half acre. Really, what we're doing is, you know, anything a half acre to five acres, we are administering the permit, we are providing oversight, and we're really trying to streamline the permitting process. There's been many occasions where someone will come in, apply for a site disturbance permit. We're all good with the city, we get through the approval process, but we can't issue the permit, because the state health department hasn't issued their permit. So that's an example of just trying to streamline this permitting process a bit. It also just increases local control. You know, just allowing the city to, to be able to manage and provide the level of oversight that really we already do. But through this program, it would just really, not only make it a little easier on the development side, but also the city's side on our upcoming CIP projects and existing CIP projects. So yeah, again, reducing delays, including for capital improvement projects. And this does not negatively impact current staff workload. Our stormwater staff reviews every single project that comes through the city. So yeah, when it comes to a level of review, we're really not adding any additional workload on our staff. Really, with the proposed fees, again, we're just trying to recover the, a minimum amount of, of cost associated with this work.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Could you go back to your last slide? I just had a couple of questions. So, the Hettenger residence may not have as much of an impact on the, what looks like Clear Creek, maybe. But that home in Hidden Lake looks like there could absolutely, if there was a big storm, have a big impact on Hidden Lake. And so, do we have, is there any wiggle room for like, hey, you're right next to a body of water, we're going to just do a little more to make sure that you're going to be in compliance and stay in compliance? And then at the Trailstone Development, Mayor Potem did the, did the math, and it came out to $1.50 about per home. came out to $1.50 about per home paying for that stormwater management plan. So that's for the development. Will there be additional stormwater fees for each builder or, or home built there or anything like that?
So it, going back to your first question, and again, I stated, I, I used a bad example for that middle home. I really just wanted to capture the project size. It is right next to a lake. So yeah, that would be something that we review during the review process and probably deem, okay, you're right next to a waterway, you probably, you'd need a site disturbance permit. And then second question, it really depends on how the project is phased. So, you know, when we're, yeah, when, when a project comes in, obviously, they have to do a lot of the overlot grading and infrastructure. Sometimes that's done all at one time, sometimes it's phased out. I can tell you with Trailstone that we did want it phased out because having 196 acres of open disturbed area is a huge risk on, on our stormwater infrastructure. So, yeah, when we phase it out, it really, it really depends on kind of who's doing what. So if we come in with the first phase, it's one contractor who's doing the overlot grading and then coming in and putting in the roadways, infrastructure, all that, we would cover that under one permit. Now, if they go and, and, you know, the second phase is covered by a different contractor, we would require a separate permit for that. And then if that phase was then sold to a builder, we would allow the original developer to, you know, either transfer that permit over or, or make the new owner apply for their own permit. Does, does that make sense? Okay, awesome. All right. So, getting into our last slide. Next steps. So we do have first reading of Chapter 50 ordinance updates scheduled for next Monday, July 15. Second reading is scheduled for August. And a proposed resolution for permit fees is scheduled for October of 2024. So what we're doing is we're including these proposed permit fees in our existing right-of-way permit and service fees, which always come to council near October. So we're just gonna do our changes in that fee schedule and then propose that as a resolution. So we're all kind of proposing our fees at the same time. And then stakeholder process has already begun and will continue. We do have virtual office hours that will be held on July 18 and August 1 from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The Zoom link is provided in the presentation, and at that time, our staff will be available for any questions or concerns from developers, contractors, engineers, really anybody who, who has questions or comments or feedback. And then I will say the, how the code is written right now, the proposed effective date for the site disturbance permit specifically and the fees associated is set for January 1, 2025. All of the other code updates will be effective immediately. We wanted to really kind of give, give us time to go through the stakeholder process as well as, once code is actually finalized, then we'll be able to send this with our application over to the state health department for their time to review and approve for the qualifying local program. So everything can go effective January 1. So, thank you so much for your time.
Perfect. Uh, Councilmember Ferrey.
Last question, I think.
Yeah, of course.
The question I had in the spirit of keeping things affordable for developers, I'm wondering if in the future, if you know the fiscal impact, if we were to add maybe an adjustment to this ordinance in any affordable housing units that are being developed on these properties, if there is a, a discount of some sort? And what that would look like? How much of a financial impact would it be if we were to cut it in half for affordable housing developments?
We can certainly look into that.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
Councilmember Marriott.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't recommend we do that. I'd be completely against that for this reason. That's, you know, subsidized housing ought to be honest first, and hiding the subsidy by making some people pay more so others pay less is a really inappropriate action, I believe, in this type of a regulatory scheme. This isn't a, a scheme to fund subsidized housing. And I think trying to fund subsidized housing out of regulations probably violates the ability for the Stormwater Fund to be a, to be an enterprise fund anyway. And so I wouldn't even come close to entertaining something like that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Our next workshop this evening is going to be the, the bigger headliner. We have our homelessness strategic plan presentation. I believe Mr. Wick, are you kicking this one off?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you. So tonight, we have a presentation related to the homelessness strategic plan that we have spent the last several months working on with our consultant Scott Shields, who is here tonight. And also, we have with us Tracy Brooks, who is our new homelessness program manager. And the way, by way of introduction, on January 9, 2023, the city team presented to the city council an introductory strategic plan that included immediate, intermediate, and long-range strategies for addressing homelessness in Arvada. And over the past year and a half, we have implemented many of those recommendations that the council agreed that we should implement. And some of the longer range goals, we have been able to roll over into the presentation that you are going to see tonight. So without further ado, I would like to introduce to you Scott Shields, who will be leading us through the presentation. And then there are a number of team members here that would be available to answer any questions as we go through. So with that, Scott.
Thank you, Don, and thank you, Mayor, members of city council. I appreciate this opportunity to be here with you tonight to talk about the proposed recommended homelessness action strategy. I will just say a couple things in introduction. One, I, I want to commend the city for considering how it's going to, and how it has, and how it's going to continue to address and work through the problem of homelessness and helping people experiencing homelessness in our community. I think that's a very important aspect of this work. I will also just note that what I'm gonna go through here with you all is a slide presentation that is a summary, a more thorough report that I believe you all have received. So I won't be going through the specific actions and other items, but I'll allude to those and talk to them. But if you have questions, I'm, I'm here to, to do my best to answer those about that document as well. So, in, in looking at this work, we really wanted to kind of define, you know, what, what the purpose of a developing homeless action strategy is. And so it's important, I think, to note that we're working to clarify and align the city's role in this, in this work. What we're recommending is that the city serve as a convener, a facilitator, a collaborative funder of, of services, helping people experiencing homelessness. But the city, it's not recommended that the city contemplate becoming a human services provider or a homeless services provider. We're working to develop implementable actions to help make a change for people experiencing homelessness and the community. I think it's important for us to keep front and center, and we'll talk in a minute a little bit about some guiding principles of this work, but that we're, we're doing this to help people in our community who are experiencing homelessness. And many aspects and data shows that people experiencing homelessness do in fact not want to be experiencing that situation. And so they want to be able to make steps toward higher levels of economic stability and housing stability. We also wanted to make sure that as part of this, that we're continuing to establish and cultivate strong working relationships to improve the collective response to homelessness. By that, we mean working interdepartmentally within the city, with external providers, doing this work every day, with the business community, with the faith community, who has been, I think, very desirous of, of channeling its collective efforts to really help make a difference around the issues of homelessness. So it's a really broad, diverse stakeholder group that we're talking about trying to, to expand and develop stronger working relationships with. So again, I, I mentioned some guiding principles of this work that, that, that we utilized, starting with the idea that everyone needs a safe place to call home, but also recognizing that the issue of homelessness is very challenging and complex, and how people may maneuver through their challenges into something that is more stable, doesn't always necessarily look like a home. There are other options, but the goal is really to be focused on helping people to seek a, a better place for them to be, and we hope that that will be a permanent home. Homelessness is a community challenge, and community challenges require community responses. And so, that's again, what I think the city is, I think, understanding and asking that an action strategy come forward, that this is an effort for all of us to come, come together and to work together on solutions and resolutions that help people in our community experiencing homelessness.
Thank you. Councilmember Marriott.
Why don't you finish up with this slide, and then I'll ask you a question about?
Okay, thank you. The, the idea that people with lived experience must be involved in helping to ensure that actions that are, that are going to be taken are relevant and are meeting the needs of people who are, who are experiencing this challenge and are not solely developed by people who, who haven't experienced that. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then also noting and recognizing that the, with many things that are systems involved or systems related, there are inequities in terms of how persons of color are disproportionately affected, and that certainly is the case with, with data that we have available that show that people of color are disproportionately affected by homelessness. Councilmember Marriott.
So I want to challenge you on a couple of your guiding principles here. So particularly the, a couple of them, but homelessness is a community problem. I mean, it's easy to say, kind of sounds like a platitude, and homelessness certainly affects the community, but homelessness is an individual's problem. Community didn't make anybody homeless. Individuals made themselves homeless, or circumstances made them homeless, but the community certainly didn't. I, I, I would not have that as a guiding principle. I might change it to say homelessness affects the community in a negative way, probably more accurate. But I, I, I wouldn't, you know, trying to lay blame for homelessness, homelessness on the community, I think, starts off on the wrong foot because it, it, it connotates that the community needs to do something to correct its, its, its bad actions. And I, I completely disagree. There's plenty of individuals that fall into that, but I surely don't see my community in that spot. You have any thoughts on that?
Well, I certainly wasn't intending, in establishing a guiding principle of this, to suggest that, that, that the community, let me retract that. I, I hear, I hear what you're saying, and I would certainly take that under advisement, that, that it is a problem affecting the community. I guess what I'm, what we're trying to put forward here is that in order to effect change and the community, in this case, being within the city of Arvada, that the city and the community of Arvada, we need to find a way for it to come together to help address the problem. Because if, if it was just an individual problem at all times, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the ability to kind of overcome that challenge as an individual without developing some solutions and assistance.
I think, I think you just hit the nail on the head right there. I mean, part of what's so vexing about this problem is, it's not an individual problem. It's a bunch of individual, individuals' problems. I think you have a slide coming up that tells us roughly how many it is. It's 200 individual problems. I don't think there's a community solution to 200 individual problems. Now, each of those individuals has an opportunity and an ability to solve their problems. So I, 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 I just, I would love to see the guiding principles be reframed to more what I would call, call reality rather than aspirational. I, I understand that, you know, the homeless industrial complex wants to make this society's problem so that, so that, you know, that they can get in on it on, on all angles and all levels. But the reality is that, that the problem is, it's that individual, and it's that one over there, and it's those three over there, and each of their problems can be very, very differently and caused by different things. And some of them are their fault, and some of them are not their fault. But it's not the communities. The community didn't cause their problem. So anyway, that's a small, small thing. Let me challenge the next one, which is that people with lived experience must be included? Again, that sounds like kind of marketing-type language, that we're gonna go to our customers and we're gonna ask them what they want for us to deliver. I think the, the customers we serve are the residents of Arvada who are the ones who have to step over poop in Old Town or make sure their kids don't pick up a needle in Old Town or whatever, however, they're individually affected by homelessness. And I would say they're the ones who matter, and that if, if you shape a program around the benefactors of the program, you're gonna get a program that's, that's slanted towards advantageous things for people who are getting something. And, and again, I, I, I think maybe this is a small thing, but I think it's a frame of reference or a point of view that's, that's completely relevant, that I think it's fine to survey people, to ask people, hey, what got you here? What would get you out of here? Those kinds of things. But taking people who, who are, were, might be in the future and saying, here, come help us write this program for you, what do you want to see? I don't know that that matches what the vast majority of the community wants to see, which the vast majority of the community, I believe what they want to see is, they don't want to see a shopping cart full of stuff blocking the sidewalk when they're walking. They don't want to see somebody showering in the fountain at Old Town. That's what they want to see, and, and I think you ought to be asking them that question, not just, hey, 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 what do you, if we're gonna give you something, what do you want? So anyway, just, just a couple of challenges there. I just, I, I would encourage you to think about that, since this is a draft, and think about some maybe different ways of, of looking at that. You know, I think that, for these programs to work, they need to be focused. They need to be focused on something and not broadly brushed across everything, or else you just create the environment by, by which any and every, everything goes, right? And not, I'm not talking about behavior, I'm not talking about bad behavior, but, but every solution goes. And I would much rather see this directed that we realize that the problem is that people don't want to go here because they're accosted by homeless people. We want to solve that issue, and that that ought to be the guiding principle of the program is we want to relieve Old Town businesses from the burden of, of all the things they suffer because of it. And we want to relieve our infrastructure from all the burdens it suffers because of it. Like, that's the focus that I think, the principles that ought to be here.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Davis, your light was on next.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Marriott. So I have some thoughts about this, too. Homelessness is a community problem. We got to think about people who are coming back from deployment overseas, who have served their country. They come back to the Denver or the Denver area where they originally lived, and they've been gone for 10, 15, 20 years. And now they come back and they're shocked at home prices in the metro area, and they cannot find a place to live yet to have a stable housing, to be around people who will support them. stable housing, to be around people who will support them. They need to be here with their loved ones, and where the support is. They just can't afford to an $1,800 a month rent. So they group together and live in homeless camps to keep one another safe, and to live with somebody who has lived their experiences, whether they're at home or overseas. We don't know what it's like to be shot at or have bombs explode around us. There are only four people in this room that might know what that's like, so five, six, 10 people, and so I think we have to respect that kind of thing. I don't know how many of you were around when President Reagan was in charge. He did something really cool in California, you might remember, where the Republican Party forced him to close mental health institutions within California, because he said that the California government didn't have, didn't have a responsibility to house those folks, and so they just closed the mental institutions and sent them out into the streets. Well, when he became president, he did that on the federal level, and now that's why we don't have a place to send and house and care for some of the most mentally ill folks in our society. And so, yes, those are the people that we see are the ones that are screaming and pooping in Old Town. What we don't see is the mother of three living in her car. We don't see the guy who's couch surfing from week to week because he can't afford rent here in Arvada, but he has a job. He has a good job. It just, we don't see the folks who actually work for the city of Arvada, who are still living with their parents at 27 because they cannot afford rent, but they have a good job with the city of Arvada. So we need to think about that. Including folks who have experienced homelessness meets our D E and I goals, and it provides perspective. I don't know what it's like to be homeless. I do know what it's like to be a person of color. I don't know what it's like to be homeless. So we need that perspective sitting at the table, helping us who have not been homeless make those decisions, so we make the right decisions. So thank you for the presentation. I think that as a community, we are moving in the right direction, and we just can't say we don't want to see homeless people in this part of town if we don't have a safe place for homeless people to go, to rest and feel safe, with or without a job. But having gone to the Court's One Small Step Program, really, the issue was, I don't have a place to rest where I feel safe, but I got to get up and go to a local business and do my job for eight to 10 hours a day, and then I don't have a place to go shower after my job. I don't have a place where I can lay my head. And I've heard that over and over again in One Small Step. This is the kind of strategy that we need to think about to meet the needs of some of our homeless that we can outreach to, and then get those who need that help, make sure that they have those services available to them. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your work that you've done on this, Scott, and the team, and also strongly agree with the guiding principles you've set out here. I believe that homelessness is a community problem, and the data backs that up, that most of the folks that, you know, we are counting in our data collection in Arvada are from Arvada, and that are classified as homeless in the different ways that they are homeless, and that number is going up. So this is a community problem that we have to address as a community. And I do believe that people with lived experiences need to be involved, because, you know, any successful program, we know the truth shows that the success is based on engaging those folks that are most impacted and what's going to benefit them. So I, again, appreciate your work in this, and I appreciate these guiding principles. Thank you.
Councilmember Embrose.
Yes, I appreciate Councilmembers Davis and Mormon, that I think the guiding principles do reflect the majority of council, and coming up with this plan especially, that this is a problem that is affecting the entire community. I would also like to address Councilmember Marriott's statement, that, you know, I think people with lived expertise who are not experiencing high barriers to homelessness are pretty involved in the city system, like the Business Improvement District. They have a lot of expertise with people who are experiencing, as business owners who are experiencing the effects of homelessness, and they have a formal mechanism to advise the city on what to do about that. And what you are proposing is people who do have high barriers to housing also have some kind of mechanism to inform the city, so that there is a more balanced system, because right now it's tilted towards people who are experiencing, you know, the impacts of homelessness on our community as business owners and as residents, but there's no formal structure for people who are actually the people who have those barriers to be able to inform the city. So I appreciate you bringing that balance, so that the city can have those informed perspectives, and appreciate that in the guiding principles.
Councilmember Frey.
Did you bring a chair? No, I know we're on slide two, but I will just note on the people with lived experiences, when we formed the Housing Committee, we specifically had a slot for someone that has experienced some sort of public service support program, has been homeless, someone that has been in the trenches, so to speak, and that is because we firmly believe we need to have people like that at the table. So I think that that aligns perfectly with this guiding principle, and I think that this is a great example of what we're looking for. So thank you.
Councilmember Fifa, would you like to make an opening statement as well? All right, please continue, Mr. Shields.
Well, thank you all, and all comments and points are well taken, and I'm making notes as you all are speaking, so thank you. So just a little bit about the process of the strategy development. There were many community interviews, what I refer to as semi-structured interviews, which had, depending on kind of the demographic or the type of interviewee, core questions, but then following the line of thinking and conversation that each of those individual conversations led to, including with many of you on council, but also with members of our business community, providers of services in the community, people with lived expertise, and many others. It included also a review of strategies and plans from other communities. What was very important in this approach was to help ensure alignment of the proposed strategies and goals with efforts that are ongoing, especially across the metro region, to help ensure some better regional approaches to this work. So however we want to debate homelessness as a community problem or not, it is also not a challenge that only exists in the city of Arvada, as you all know. And so, in my opinion, it doesn't do us good to come forth with a strategy that works to address a problem only in the city of Arvada, but is now also aligned with efforts across the broader region. It included research of other local and national practices and other evidence-based approaches in working to address the challenging issue of homelessness. And then, as you all, again, know, developed detailed actions, a listing of potential revenue sources, and an operating pro forma specifically related to one primary component and recommendation of this plan that I'll talk more about, that I know is very much on council's radar screen. So in the development of this action strategy, as well as putting together this presentation tonight, I want to stress, I did not spend a lot of time pulling forth a wide variety of data to explain how the problem is severe and dire. I believe that members of council and members of the community understand that homelessness is a challenge and an issue that needs to be addressed, and I don't think that I needed to overload with data sources to support that. But I did pull in a couple of data points here, just to illustrate and create a bit of a baseline, with the caveat that I know you all are aware of, gathering accurate data around the issue of homelessness is challenging. We have two different sources here on this particular slide. The one on the left is information that's coming out of what's called HMIS, or the Homelessness Management Information System, and that is only as good as the information that's being put into it, and I think the city would acknowledge it's making some improvements, along with its partner agencies, on improving the data collection coming out of the HMIS system. And then the information on the right, which is specific to Jefferson County, is coming from the annual point-in-time count, which, again, I think is largely acknowledged as an undercount. It is very challenging to go out and accurately identify everyone who's experiencing homelessness on a particular day or week. But these are baselines. I want to be cautious in saying, we can't necessarily compare them, because they're also two different sources of information, but what you can see with both is that we are seeing numbers increasing. And here in Arvada, in the most recent full year of data, in the HMIS system, 298 people experiencing homelessness were identified. What is not on this slide, but is in your report, that I also want to stress, is that with a recent request or proposal that the city issued relative to outreach services for people experiencing homelessness, the city indicated in the RFP, they estimate on any given night, 200 people are on the Arvada streets and are unsheltered. And so I want to stress that number as well, because that came from our city team. The most recent available point-in-time data was able to be dissected with a little bit more clarity around people in Arvada who are experiencing homelessness, were able to indicate primary reasons why they were experiencing homelessness. Please note, you can, in the survey process, you can identify more than one reason, so this is, these are primary reasons, but not the primary reason. And as you can see, there are eight here, all of which had at least 20% or higher of people in the survey indicating the primary reasons for their experience of homelessness. It does include the issues of substance abuse and misuse, as well as mental illness, but it also, at the top, are some very related issues of unable to pay mortgage or rent, or loss of a job, or a very important aspect of abuse in the home, or relationship issues that are also related to experiencing homelessness.
Councilmember Marriott.
So I wanted to challenge you on this one, too. I assume these are reported by individuals who are homeless, they're reporting why that, why they're homeless. And I understand there's probably more data than this, but I think expressed like this, I have a really hard time believing this. And it's because you have a big category of 32% of people were asked to leave. Were they just asked to leave out of the blue? Or were they abusing substances and asked to leave? Or were they exhibiting behaviors that made it difficult for them to be there and they were asked to leave? You know, you look at relationship problems or family breakup, how much of that is due to violence, substance abuse, abuse and violence in the home? How often, I mean, the law, the police could probably tell us, how often that's a singular characteristic in cases? I'm guessing it's almost never a singular characteristic in cases. But I think the thing, the thread that probably goes all the way through this, in every one of those categories, is, you know, maybe not people who just have difficulty paying their mortgage, but people with difficulty paying their rent, losing their job, relationship problems, asked to leave, abuse and violence. I got to think substance abuse flows all the way through that, and is far and away the number-one cause of people experiencing homelessness in Arvada. I mean, would you comment on that? Would you believe that as well?
I would not argue the fact that of these other reasons, substance abuse or mental illness could be contributing factors, but I don't agree that substance use is the primary underlying thread of all. I think in talking with many people, substance use often occurs after experiencing homelessness, not necessarily always the contributing problem. So that's my anecdotal piece here, and you are right, Councilmember Marriott, that this is information that is self-reported, and yet it has to be asked in a way that can be, you know, understood from a survey process, so it doesn't ask the question, as you posed, of any common thread throughout each of these answers. But again, as I was attempting to explain, and maybe didn't do a very good job, they can cite multiple reasons. So somebody who was unable to pay the mortgage or rent could also have had substance abuse problems. That's very, you know, much an option. There also could have been domestic violence in the home that had nothing related to substances at all, and then that person was unable to pay rent or mortgage due to power and control exerted in a dynamic such as that.
Well, I understand that each individual story is different, right? Everybody has an individual story. But I'm afraid when we do this, where we, this looks specifically designed to minimize the effect of substance abuse problems on homelessness, I think that when we start off from a position of, I don't know, we can euphemistically call it whatever we want, lack of transparency, or trying to get at a certain outcome, or cast a vision a certain way, I'm afraid we then draw inaccurate conclusions because of it. And I would just ask anybody who goes to Old Town at all, when was the last time you ran across a homeless person in Old Town who wasn't having substance abuse problems? I'm not sure I ever have. Maybe I have, I don't know, but I run across them that have substance abuse problems every time I go to Old Town, every time. And I get, there's a broad definition of homeless. There are people who, they have a place to live. It's at a friend's house, and they're technically homeless, or they're living with their grandmother because they don't have their own place, and technically they're homeless. I get that, and you can't broadly brush this. But I also don't think if we're coming up with a strategy here to deal with the problem, if we're not accurate about the problem, we're not going to draw accurate conclusions. We're going to draw inaccurate conclusions based on inaccurate data here. And I realize this also probably is just to illustrate for us, maybe this isn't the data that you're using when we come up with these purported things, but I have such a hard time believing that of the 200 people on any given night that are sleeping on the streets of Arvada, that substance abuse is only present in 60 of those 200 people.
And if I could respond?
Sure.
This data is not suggesting that of 200 people on the streets, only 60 of them, or roughly a third, are experiencing problems with substance use. It's indicating the top 10 reasons why people experienced homelessness, why they became homeless. Again, drawing the distinction between what was occurring in their home that led to that experience of homelessness versus what they're experiencing now, that they are unsheltered and on the streets.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. An additional quick clarification, because I believe we noted earlier, this count, while there are overlapping reasons, so for instance, somebody who lost their job then is unable to pay their mortgage or rent, et cetera, these capture everyone in Arvada, including those who maybe have a job but living in their car, et cetera. They aren't necessarily the most visible homeless. The more invisible homeless are also captured in this data, correct?
So, correct. This is coming from the point-in-time count, so anyone in Arvada in 2023 who is counted in the point-in-time count, which, by the way, was not a data point that I shared, it happens to be 238 in 2023, of those 238 people, it could have been, it could have been the person in the town square, it could have been a person in the town square, or it could have been a mom and two kids, underemployed, living in a car, and sleeping in the Walmart parking lot. Yes.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Well, Mary, you kind of, that's where I was going to allude to, but I'll wrap my thoughts around it. I, I actually appreciate this graph because it really does highlight exactly what the mayor was leading to, which is, I always divide them up into the invisible homeless and then you have the visible homeless, which, you know, I think a lot of the experiences Councilmember Marriott's referring to is maybe the more visible ones that become more chronic, more criminal. And yeah, they're, they're painful to deal with. But the single mom with two kids, or a single dad and two kids in a car, living and still has a job, but the working poor, some people refer to them as important. And I think this really does highlight. And, and maybe there's so many variables you could manipulate this data to, to whatever argument you want to make. But at the end of the day, it highlights a common theme that it does show it's a community's issue. And it is a policy driven on, on a lot of these majority things. Like how we do zoning may impact how we, the type of housing we get in here. The zoning can also affect what kind of jobs, if we even protect our commercial and retail space, to create jobs. You know, when you talk about having our police or our court system being more involved with domestic violence, that can affect some of these squares. And so I, I, this is probably the graph that I went to first, out of strategic plan that really captivated me and, and really highlighting the issue. The, the chronic criminal ones, they're, they need to be put in a box. And I know the police will do the great job they do every day to deal with them. But the ones that we need to focus on are the ones that we don't always see that really do need to, need us as elected officials to help shape our community in a way that is pulling people up. We don't need to give a hand out, but a hand up. And I think that's where some of our policy driven, what we can do up here on the dais can really move the needle on these subjects. So I think you're spot on. We, we've got to try somewhere. And I know we're on page six. You have 19 pages. So I'm going to wrap up my comments. I'll try to keep quiet. But I think so far, what I've read in the strategic plan and what you've presented thus far is spot on. And at least it's a path forward.
Thank you. Please continue.
So I, I wanted also just, I think you're all aware of, of the work that's been happening in the city over a span of time. But I wanted, again, as I indicated in the beginning, committing the city on working to, to, to address this challenge, noting some of those efforts. You know, there was a, a city council strategic planning retreat earlier this year in February, at which the issue of homelessness and housing was one of the top priorities. That led in part to the adoption of your strategic plan in May of this year, as well as the housing strategic plan. As, as you know, the Arvada Police Department created, I believe, in 2018, the core team, the Community Outreach Resource Enforcement Team, designed to work with people experiencing homelessness, build trust, connect them to resources and other providers. The creation of the One Small Step Problem Solving Court is certainly an impressive endeavor. And Councilmember Davis referenced earlier. As, as, as Don Wick mentioned in the beginning and the introductions, the creation of the homelessness program manager position, and Tracy Brooks in her role, as well as the city moving forward with filling two resolution case manager positions, hopefully in the near term. You also, I'm sure, are aware that the Arvada Housing Authority, late last year, I believe in 2023, secured a Department of Local Affairs Division of Housing grant that includes component, three primary components to develop a street outreach program, to provide shelter resources through a motel voucher program, as well as provide bridge housing services through that same motel voucher program. And that grant is in the process of being implemented. Also, not specifically part of the city, the next two, but the Arvada Fire Protection District and the Star Vada Program, modeled off the STAR Program in the City and County of Denver, designed to provide better responses to people who, who are, you know, better responses than just having to only take them to an emergency room and also to try to help lower calls and responses by other first responders. And then the Arvada Library, again, not part of the city of Arvada, but located obviously very much at, at sort of the epicenter of some of the challenge that we're seeing in Old Town, is also delivering services onsite and working with other community providers. The last one, which there are many of, of those providers who are providing services in the community. Just to mention a few, Beyond Home, Mission Arvada, Community Table, all programs that you know, Jefferson Center, Family Tree, et cetera. So again, homelessness is, is, is a vexing challenge and issue. And there are, there are challenges that, that make it even harder, I think, at times for us as, as a community, as a city, as a region, to address this. Already been, again, a bit alluded to, but people experiencing homelessness often have frequent contact with the criminal justice system. We don't currently have any emergency shelter in Arvada or within Jefferson County, other than we do have severe weather-related approaches that have been utilized historically. But no, you know, no, no ongoing sheltering option that can help people be in places that are more suitable for human habitation and also be housing focused in their next steps. Regional efforts have been talked about for quite some time, but they are still lacking in creating really solid alignment and really being able to move the needle forward on the regional approach. And services can often be siloed. Partnerships are important to address this. Partnerships are, are hard. Partnerships developed, whether it's between public-private or to nonprofit, community-based organizations or more, those are difficult to do and to do well. It means sharing risk and sharing reward. And so we do often see services that can be siloed. We have a lack of affordable and permanent support of housing. That was identified and discussed in the housing strategic plan that, that the council approved back in May. And again, we often have a real challenge with community opposition to having programs experience, to serve people experiencing homelessness, or what we often call NIMBY, or not in my backyard. And, yeah.
Sorry, Councilman Burt Ambrose had her light on first.
Yeah, I'm interested in this challenge of the siloing of regional efforts. I'm reading in the full report that it's difficult, even though there is a coordinated entry, the local continuum of care and the Jefferson County Regional Homeless Coordinator. Can you talk more about what's going on and why these partnerships are so difficult to, you know, implement? Like, because one of the guiding principles you say is like, we want to implement a strategy that is coordinated as part of a regional effort. And then one of the challenges is that the regional efforts are siloed, so it's hard to coordinate. So can you talk about that siloing and what's going on there?
So I, I'm just going to clarify one bit. Regional efforts are still lacking is one, is one challenge. And then services are often siloed is a different challenge. So there have been efforts to try to align regional approaches and solutions for decades. But I don't believe that they've really truly moved the needle very far on creating strategies and specific actions that really resonate and are implementable across a metro region as diverse as the Denver metro region. Some of that comes from the challenge of having seven distinct counties within the metro region, who then are not always on the same page about how to invest human, financial, and other resources in addressing the problem. So while you have some higher, while you have some overarching entities, like the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative, the homelessness coordinator role at Jefferson County, there are, there are still just inherent challenges in bringing and marshaling resources across municipalities, across counties, across cities, and making a, an effort that is more regional in its approach, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Councilmember Marriott.
Yes, so I want to, I want to talk about this fifth box, the community opposition to programs serving. If I were to rewrite that box and say, community, community members differing views on programs serving people experiencing homelessness, would you, would that fit in that box instead? Community members differing views.
Yes, I think so.
Okay. And why would that be a challenge?
The challenge of community members with differing views often then leads to difficulty of bringing programs forward and implementing programs in the community.
But, but doesn't, you know, hearty debate, healthy disagreement, provide the best outcome? And this seems to say to me that, you know, everybody who believes all that we believe is right, and everybody who doesn't is wrong, and they're an impediment for us doing what we want to do. And I think when it comes to a problem like this, particularly, you know, I disagree that it's a community problem, but one seems to think it's a community problem. I think the community members who have differing views, I don't see them as a challenge or a problem at all. In fact, they ought to be an asset. They ought to be something that's taken into consideration in this type of a thing, that you can't just take everybody who agrees with me and we're going to write this thing up and we're all going to agree that we're right. And so obviously, we can't be anything but, any, anything but right. I wouldn't call community opposition a challenge at all. And I don't think the community has opposition to trying to solve or make better homelessness. I think there's a lot of differing views on what that looks like and how to do it. You know, I think there's plenty of community members that think solving homelessness is finding some poor wretch on the corner and showering him up and feeding him up and giving him a place to live. And bingo, they're not homeless anymore. Other people's definition might very well be, I don't want to see a shopping cart blocking the sidewalk in Old Town Arvada. I don't really care about anything else. And I think all those views are important and I wouldn't call them challenges. I'd, I'd, I'd take that out of there. I think that's, I think in something like this, you want to encourage differing opinions, differing views. You want to encourage sharp debate. You want to encourage best outcomes that are thoroughly vetted and not, as you say in your, in your third one, siloed thinking. So I would, again, I know this is a draft. This may change, may not change. But I wouldn't call that a challenge at all. I mean, you know, when a community member is opposed to something, I don't care what it is, a development thing, a, a human services program, you know, you, you, you name it, they generally come, come across that opposition honestly. I mean, they're not just being difficult to be difficult. They have a perspective and a point of view that matters, too. And that, and that shouldn't be a challenge. That should be, should be welcome input. So anyway.
Councilmember Frey.
Thank you. So when we look at our data historically over the past few years, we've seen an increase of a desire for the, for more housing and more homelessness programs and services. So I think what we're trying to approach on that fifth bullet, or that fifth box, is that there is a desire for people to solve or deal with the homelessness issue that we're having, just not in certain geographical areas. So I think that maybe we need to rework that a little bit in, in terms of NIMBYism because it's not so much community opposition to programs, it's community opposition to programs in certain areas. For example, we have people that want to help homeless people and there's available schools. And they talk about, let's buy a school and we'll redo, we'll redo the school and have a navigation center there. But the people around there don't want that. But those people sometimes are also ones that want to solve housing and homelessness. So I think that this is what we're trying to get at, is that there is a desire in the community to help people that are experiencing homelessness. The challenge is where? And I think that is what we're trying to tackle in that fifth bullet. Am I right? And that is what you're trying to get at?
It is, but as, as, as mentioned, maybe, maybe not worded as well as it, as it could be. I think Councilmember Frey, you're, you're also referring to the community survey, which I believe a little over half of, of Arvada residents who were surveyed indicated a desire to bring homelessness services and to provide more programming. But I want to say something quite a bit less than half said they would be okay with having any of that programming in their neighborhood.
Awesome. Thank you for that clarification.
I, I, I don't, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this slide. I mean, if you have questions, I will certainly answer your questions. I want to really focus on, on just a couple of these roles. So these are roles just of various entities or, or organizations. But again, as mentioned in the beginning, I want to stress that the role of the city of Arvada is designed in, in this action strategy to be that of a convener, a facilitator, a collaborative funder, not a sole funder, and not an operator of services. Looking for Jefferson County in its efforts to, again, going back to Councilmember Ambrose's comment about some of the regional efforts, looking for the county to bring forward some regional leadership in, in, in Jefferson County, but also recognizing that this is a problem that's not, again, not in, just in Arvada, not just in Jefferson County, it's across the metro region. We, we've already talked about people with lived expertise. The role, as I said earlier, is to help ensure that the desired, or not desired, but the solutions brought forward are, are going to help meet their, their needs and help them in that journey. I'm going to argue that it doesn't necessarily do good to create programs that people who are the consumers of those programs will not utilize. And we have seen those efforts across, really, I would argue, across the metro region for decades in certain different aspects. And as I mentioned earlier, I also want to stress what, what I have seen, admittedly a bit superficially in, in, in my efforts in this work, but the faith community's impressive desire to want to coalesce and come together and really try to align its work in helping to bring forth supports and assistance for people experiencing homelessness. And that ranges from things like bringing volunteers forward or, or donations all the way to, we have faith community efforts, as you know, that are doing direct services work in, in, in the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Ambrose.
Yeah, I have a few things that are more to the draft plan that was presented and not to this presentation. But one of the things about the people with lived experience, I was wondering if there are such bodies that already exist? For example, if there's like a lived experience council that advises Family Tree, or if there's a lived experience committee group that advises Jefferson County? Like if there is already such a group that already has experience in Arvada and that we could ask for their, you know, expertise on initial projects so we're not reinventing the wheel and creating a whole new thing off of something that's, another agency has already created?
I, I think there have been some efforts. I can't speak to currently how effective they are, but I do think, to your point of not reinventing the wheel, it would, it would make sense to look to those bodies across the region to see if there are opportunities to utilize that expertise in those formats rather than having to necessarily just create, create a, a committee or an advisory committee here in, in Arvada, if that's the desire.
Okay. And then I have two more request, like requests for more information. One is that there is a quote, or a sentence on page 11 that says that the city, either from its general fund or pass-through funding, has about 2.2, between 2.2 and 2.5 million dollars of expenditures for direct services to homeless folks. And I would appreciate it if it was broken out of that 2-point millions of dollars, how much of it is from operational funds from the city versus pass-through, like federal dollars that come in, Medicaid dollars, those kinds of things, to be able to help homelessness. So if that analysis could be provided, I would appreciate it.
And I would say I do think that there's been a pretty strong start from the city team on, on that analysis through the first six months of 2024. So I, I do believe that, that the additional detail that you're requesting could, could be, could be provided.
Great. And then another analysis that I would like to see is like a cost benefits analysis of doing nothing versus intervention and prevention. For example, if we had a navigation center that cost us so many beds to, you know, to operate, how much money are we saving in cleaning up Old Town? Because people actually have a place to stay and they're not leaving things around. You know, I think that this economic data is hard to get, but I think it has been done of how much money city, when cities invest in services or organize resources, that it actually saves the city money in the long run. I know it saves other agencies money in the long run. Like if you're able to give preventative care, then you don't end up providing emergency room care, those kinds of things. And I'm just wondering if there's other data that we could bring to this to show that it's actually in the city's best economic interest to be able to organize these resources.
I'm going to punt a little bit on, on that, to, to a little bit later in the, in, in this discussion tonight, because I am going to, I would like to go a little bit more into the navigation center, some of the common elements of programming and recommendation to move forward if, if the city chooses to, in development of a navigation center. What, what, if I don't answer that question, though, more than, I, I also want to stress, navigation centers are still a, a relatively new advent in the homelessness solutions realm. So I don't have any, I'm not aware of any readily available data related to navigation center cost savings analyses. Generally speaking, they are related to permanent supportive housing or other housing programs that show how those diminish the costs on, on various systems. But the recommendation that, that I'm putting forth is to have a navigation center that's housing-focused. So it's trending in that direction, and, and it's part of, I believe, an important step in, in helping people who are unsheltered get in off the streets and be able to move in that.
Let me clarify, I gave the navigation center as an example, but I actually mean, you know, housing strategies across the board, like providing services for people who are about to lose housing. Having a coordinator that organizes services for residents, whether they have houses or not. You know, all these intervention strategies that when the city organizes it, it saves money in the long run, and I think those studies about, whatever data is available, like if there's more established data on permanent supportive housing, for example, would love to be able to see those, so that we can see how doing something is a cost benefit versus what, doing nothing.
Thank you. So I'm going to move on from this slide. So we're, we're now getting into, again, as I mentioned in the beginning, these are the goals and recommended, recommended goals and recommended strategies. The document you have has a, a whole additional matrix of, of actions with recommended responsible parties, and even recommended consideration of completion timeframes. One, one of the things that, that I heard quite a bit within this, this process was to have efforts that are actionable and are implementable, that are not just high-level strategies, that are not capable of, of actually, I shouldn't say not capable, but are not coupled with actions that can help address the problem. I also will just note here that you'll see parenthetically under many of, of these strategies that, that we'll go through, that it indicates CCSP strategic alignment. That's the city council strategic plan. So city staff were able to go through these recommended strategies and identify which city council strategic plan result and goal it was, it was aligned with. So that's what that means.
Councilmember Frey.
Two questions. One, with the list of the goals, is this in priority, like the priority of what we think is most important from goals one to five?
Sometimes.
All right. Well, my, I ask that because we have limited funding and availability. So when we're looking at what we want to prioritize in terms of these five goals, is it the recommendation that goal one is most important onward down? Recognizing a lot of these are important, how do we decipher that?
I, I would say that, that generally speaking, I would say that goal one is, is a high priority, is maybe the highest priority. You will note that it is the only goal with five strategies attached to it. So it is, there is a lot here. And yes, you're right, with, with limited resources, decisions will have to be made. Goal two is about, I believe it's about prevention. And so, you know, we talked, that's already been mentioned. You know, there's a problem with solving homelessness for, helping solve homelessness for one person, and then having another person, you know, first, experiencing first-time homelessness, which also is not a data point we've talked about, but that is on the rise. So I, I wouldn't disagree that this is, is generally in priority fashion. When it comes to the strategies, they also, underneath each goal, would, would, would also generally be in priority fashion, not necessarily solely based on financial or other resources potentially contemplated to investing in this, but also because of just sequentially how, how recommendation of how things might work best.
Thank you, Scott.
Your light's not on, Councilmember Marriott. Please, go for it.
So, question I have here is a strategy. One says establish a housing-focused outreach services. How did that make it in there? And let me just note that there's differing views. There are some who say, well, if you make it housing-focused, and you give everybody housing, then by definition, they're not homeless anymore. They got a home, and they're fine. The other approach, obviously, is a treatment-focused program, where you say, people, if you give them a house, they can't stay there if they don't get the underlying issue treated. But we seem to have picked one of those two approaches to the, as, as at least primary, if not exclusive. How, how or why did we pick that as opposed to anything regard to treatment?
Couple responses, Councilmember. So this is specifically around outreach services. And so I will respectfully disagree that treatment services are an evidence-based approach. Housing-focused means being focused on getting a person into a housing stability, into housing stability, or, or a better situation such as that. What I am not suggesting, or what this particular strategy is not intending to suggest, is that any type of housing solution is not, does, is incorporating comprehensive services to the point of treatment services, but it's, it's utilizing that approach after housing is provided. And so that is what I believe data shows as an evidence-based approach, rather than a treatment-first approach, as, as you've heard the term, the housing-first approach. This is an element of that, but it is providing outreach services that are designed to be housing-focused. So in other words, research has shown the efficacy of being housing-focused in your outreach is better than doing outreach that is providing clothing, food, which are, are maybe needed and necessary items, and can be part of a housing-focused approach. But outreach that does not have the housing-focused approach has, has been shown to produce less effective results in getting people off the streets.
Let me ask you a question, a hypothetical. Let's say I become homeless tomorrow morning, and I decide I don't want to sleep on the streets, but I have no substance abuse problem whatsoever, and I'm willing to accept whatever health I, whatever help I can get in the region, in the metro, in the metro area, not in my neighborhood, but in the metro area. Would I have a place to be in a shelter that night? Remember, no, no substance abuse problem. I'm asking for help. I'm willing to take what I can get.
If, if the, if the sheltering option was one that you, you were willing to take, yes, I, you would have an option.
So it's available. But let's, let's say hypothetically, though, the same person has significant drug issues or substance abuse, be substance abuse issues significant. And they say, yeah, I don't really want to deal with that, but I'd just as soon not sleep outside what he had got for me. Don't they have a really difficult time finding places to be?
They, they could. It depends on the difference of sheltering options that are, are lower barrier versus higher barrier eligibility requirements. So lower-barrier sheltering options would not precondition someone's, for example, sobriety.
Sure.
Almost always, however, I, I would stress, they, they don't, lower-barrier programs don't permit use within the shelter, but it doesn't mean that somebody couldn't come in, you know, in an altered state of a substance, in seeking, in seeking a bed.
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I've heard this stated before, and I think I believe it, and that is that there are shelter beds available every night. There are people sleeping on the streets, and there are shelter beds available. And so you say, well, why, why is that? I'm sure there are some people who just prefer to sleep on the streets, and I, you know, I don't think a housing-first strategy fixes that for them, if that's what they, what they do. But you, when you concentrate on a housing strategy for these people that are out there, don't you just increase the number of beds that they're, that are already in surplus? In other words, you look at it as kind of a market-based approach. There's a need, and there's demand, and then there's supply, and the supply is currently ample. Now, it may not be what that person wants, and it may not be ideal, but, but for temporary supply, there's supply available. And so this goal or strategy is talking about further increasing the supply when the supply is currently adequate. Am I, am I wrong about that?
I mean, I, I don't think if we were to look at the numbers of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness, that we would, we would say that there are shelter beds, for example, across the metro region to, to meet each of those numbers. So, but I'd have to double-check that. That's a data point. Maybe I shouldn't have been so rash in saying. What, what I would say in, in the economic argument, in response to the economic argument of supply and demand, is that I, I do believe, and this has been illustrated through some of my conversations, I would say all of the conversations I have with people experiencing homelessness in, in, in my work, is that people who are choosing to live on the streets versus to go into a shelter are choosing not to accept those shelter beds, because those shelter beds they view as being in some way potentially more harmful to their existence than being on the streets. There is, experiencing homelessness, I think, without a doubt, is in and of itself a traumatic experience. And there's been decades now of research that show the effects of trauma on the human brain. And being in an environment that is triggering from a trauma perspective for people, sometimes they're able to view that as being more harmful to their situation than choosing another solution that might be living in an unsheltered, taking an unsheltered option and not, and not living in, in a shelter. But I, but I, there is data that supports that people do not choose or want to experience homelessness.
Right. So the, is the issue really the, the quality of sheltering options available, not necessarily the quantity?
I think that could be argued.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Frey.
Hi. Just to follow up on that, as a former case manager for homeless people, one of the, a lot of the reasons is separation. Families don't want to separate to go into a shelter. They don't want to give out their pets. They've been abused, there's drugs, it's not sanitary. There is a ton of reasons why someone might not want to do a shelter and choose their, to Scott's point. But there's a ton of reasons that people might not want to do a shelter over camping.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Yes, to support that, Councilmember Frey, I supported shelters in my previous occupation with the city and county of Denver. And often, women who are experiencing homelessness, who are, who have jobs, do not want to go into a shelter because they're unsafe. They could be, something could happen to them, so that they don't want to do that. Oftentimes, there are plenty of beds, but there aren't enough workers in those facilities to keep you safe. So you don't, you know, you go to the restroom, you don't know what's going to happen to you in the restroom. So as a matter of personal safety, oftentimes, folks who are, who have jobs, who are with their full and healthy minds, they will choose to stay outside to keep their own self safe, whether it's from disease, physically safe, mentally safe. As the trauma for the brain, as you alluded to, Scott, it's very important that they just have some sort of stability. And if you've ever been in a shelter, there is a level of chaos, whether folks are with their full minds or not, just through being an unhoused person. So yes, there are plenty of beds. It's the quality of beds.
Thank you very much. It is 8:10. In order to give Mr. Spears a break on his feet, I'm going to call a 10-minute recess, and we will meet back here at 8:20 to continue this important conversation. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Scott.[337.81]
And I'll mention that here in a second. Experiencing homelessness for it to be located at a navigation center. So there's a couple of pieces here that I want to mention. When referring to a 24/7 shelter, that is a sheltering approach that is not an overnight shelter. So an overnight shelter is commonly where someone lines up at, say, 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, waits to get a shelter bed, and then is asked to leave again in the morning. A 24/7 shelter provides continuity of bed space. So again, a practice and approach that is designed to help build relationships with people experiencing homelessness to be able to help to work on that increase of housing and economic stability and leading in that housing-focused manner toward a better outcome. This recommendation, as well as the next one, are both referencing or very specifically talking about a navigation center program. As you probably noted in this slide deck, we're going to go a little bit more in-depth on navigation center programming after we get through the goals and the strategies. So I do want to just say that you're certainly welcome to ask any questions now, but we may go into that a little bit later. Also, the recommendation at this point for starting with programming for adults is, again, designed to meet what data we have available or designed to address the data we have available that is indicative that the problem in Arvada is affecting adults experiencing homelessness at this moment more so proportionately than families. And starting that programming because it is a gap in services, not only in the city of Arvada, but also in Jefferson County. Strategy three is related to that, but this is the development of the more fulsome navigation center, and that can and should be phased in. But again, we'll talk more about navigation center programming, but I want to stress the belief of the importance of having sheltering options incorporated into a navigation center approach and having those services integrated and embedded in that program. Strategy four is about developing and implementing an encampment decommissioning program. Again, this is sequentially after outreach services have been provided, after shelter beds have been established. This is about working with people experiencing homelessness and helping them to find better alternatives than their encampment and helping them to reach those better alternatives, which we hope would be some of the shelter beds at a navigation center or other resources available, but working with them and then working through that decommissioning, camp decommissioning process. Strategy five gets back to some of the comments that we've already talked a bit about. Regional approaches and strategies have been lacking across the metro region. There are, right now, in development, at least five other navigation centers across the region. We think that this could be a real opportunity for the city to leverage those developments through collaborative efforts, but also to really even take a lead in helping to create opportunities to align programming, to figure out how to ensure duplication of effort and services is minimized or mitigated to the extent possible, and really working to help create better alignment regionally across the metro area.
Councilmember Faray?
In the more detailed plan that you gave us, there was no mention of safe parking programs, and I'm wondering where that comes into play here?
It doesn't at this time. But it's not necessarily that that recommendation could not be incorporated. There were some options to consider, some other pallet-type approaches and other sheltering options such as that, but the safe outdoor parking is not currently part of the recommendations.
A lot of this is longer-term, which I appreciate the planning of that, but in the more immediate term, even pallets is still longer-term. So I'm wondering why we wouldn't want to incorporate something like safe parking, which is already established in the city and in other cities in this plan?
Ms. Gillis?
We are in the middle of discussions with the county and other regional partners on the safe parking. So it was running parallel with this because the Safe Parking Effort and the Safe Parking, I can't remember the name of the group, but they are struggling with some decision-making. So to put it in here would have been ahead of having all the information that we need. But it's bright on the radar, and Donwick is aware of it. So it's not that it's not happening and we're not working on it. It's just not in this plan.
Okay. So are we going to put it, or are we thinking about it?
I just made a note, and I'll certainly, yeah, I'll certainly talk with the city team about that.
Carrie Rennick from the county has been leading the information gathering and the collection related to funding and where safe parking is available. She is aware of some of the work that we're doing right now, so we're being considered for part of the solution.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, move on to goal two, which, as mentioned before, is about preventing people from experiencing homelessness. This has really three strategies. Cultivating prevention services for individuals and households at risk of experiencing homelessness. Strategy two is exploring the creation of an eviction or foreclosure prevention program to serve all types of at-risk households in Arvada. That was to stress, to say, to earlier comments of families who might be at risk of experiencing homelessness. So not serving all households, that's certainly not financially feasible, but creating a, potentially exploring the opportunity to create a program that could serve all types of households to help minimize those demographics. And then, again, as mentioned earlier, working to align some of these strategies with the city council strategic plan as well as the housing strategic plan. Strategy three is working on the preservation of affordable housing, which is obviously critically important, but is largely, at this moment, more contemplated in the housing strategy, but wanting to demonstrate, again, alignment of this effort with other efforts that are happening within the city. And again, as noted and as you all have seen, there are more specific actions and tactics related to each of these goals. Goal three is fostering long-term housing stability, and this has two strategies. The first is an opportunity for the city to consider how it could help to support the maximization of permanent supportive housing units. Again, as mentioned, permanent supportive housing being an evidence-based approach to helping people experiencing unsheltered homelessness with high barriers to housing stability, and also stressing that while permanent supportive housing as an approach utilizes housing first, it is absolutely critical, and research supports it, that you must have a wraparound comprehensive services available. Otherwise, housing-first approaches will largely not be successful. Again, I know that council is familiar with permanent supportive housing projects because I came before many of you not so long ago to speak about one that's in the development process here in the city. But while that has an opportunity to really help make a dent in the problem of homelessness and helping to address people experiencing it, there is a need within Arvada for consideration of more permanent supportive housing units. And then strategy two is ensuring meaningful progress toward affordable housing goals outlined in the Arvada Strategic Housing Plan. Again, demonstrating alignment, but I want to stress this is not, you know, suggesting that this plan takes precedent over the housing strategic plan or provides any type of oversight over the housing strategic plan, but there is too much efforts and strategies and tactics in common between these efforts, and we wanted to make sure that we were acknowledging that and identifying that.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Yeah, a comment I wanted to ask about permanent supportive housing. Just to make it clear, these are things like, you know, the Veterans Administration has places for veterans housing first. Like, veterans are one of the groups that are the, one of the largest groups of people experiencing homelessness, and they are one of the groups of people who have the highest barriers to getting housing. So my question about the permanent supportive housing, I mean, that is like one of the examples, right, of a permanent supportive housing? And then the units that are being built at Family Tree with wraparound services, like 82 or so that we approved a while ago, right? Those are the examples?
Yes, there certainly are, you know, permanent supportive housing projects that focus on serving veterans. And yes, the Family Tree project just down the street is an example of a permanent supportive housing project, yes.
Can you talk a little bit more about how we would determine how many of those we would need? I mean, how many are in Arvada right now?
There, I don't believe that there are any permanent supportive housing projects in Arvada until the Family Tree project comes online later in 2025. There are certainly what is called scattered site approaches to providing housing supports in permanent supportive housing means, and that means working with existing landlords and property managers in the community and providing the housing assistance and the case management assistance and all the wraparound assistance, but not located in a specific project. So it would occur in the community in existing housing units.
Right, there's like some community-based mental health programs, for example, that provide wraparound services to folks, but where they're at, and they don't have to be located somewhere, right?
Right, right. So I think in answer to your question, though, how to determine it would be based on some of the data that we need to, that the city has acknowledged wanting to make some improvements in the collection and the analysis of the data. So that would be connected to that, which is actually in, is goal five, around the data collection and data strategies.
So, and am I right in saying that permanent supportive housing is a good long-term solution for people who are experiencing high barriers to housing?
Yes. Goal four is facilitate broad access to information to increase awareness and understanding of homelessness in the community. So strategy one is to consider launching a coordinated messaging campaign. This is to work on dispelling some of the challenges of homelessness, helping the community to understand and maybe work to embrace how the community can be involved. And then strategy two is establishing a culture of authentic communication on homelessness with the community. As the city contemplates how it's going to invest resources in addressing homelessness, again, human, financial, things the city is already doing, this goal is recommending just establishing a direct and authentic mode or means of communication with the community, because this is a challenging problem. And there are differing opinions on solutions and efforts. And the recommendation is to create an opportunity for dialogue with the community that's authentic in addressing what's working, what's not, what's not working in specific communities, and even contemplating how efforts to improve and evolve could be incorporated into this work.
Councilmember Marriott?
So I had a question about this one. So two things. I read in, I think, your narrative of your timeline about hiring a communications consultant to, I don't know, market homelessness, Arvada's homelessness solutions to people or to coordinate a messaging camp. I mean, in my world, that sounds like advertising, kind of?
I mean...
Public information?
Yeah, it's a public awareness campaign or even potentially could be considered a public will-building campaign. So it wouldn't be, at its core, it wouldn't, on a smaller scale, it wouldn't be dissimilar to efforts decades ago of public will-building to get people to wear seat belts, for example.
The question I guess I would have is, how in the world can a city, you know, one, it sounds like this is a city function. I think in your timeline, it's the city doing it, not whoever the operator of a homeless navigation center might be. But how can a city do that fairly? And I'm going to give you an example. You know, we have in Old Town The Rising, for instance, and just due to criticisms over the last year or so, they now tout their stats. And it's the most hilariously ridiculously cherry-picked group of data you've ever seen, where they can, you know, justify the carnage that they're causing by, "But look on this side, look at, this is what we do." And the thought of the city being in that business of, you know, trying to sell this program to the residents of the city. I mean, I don't understand how that happens. And I guess my question to you was going to be, why does that lie in the city's lap versus if the concept is to have a homeless navigation center that some nonprofit's going to run it and some other nonprofit's going to provide services, and there's going to be, you know, this family of nonprofits who are going to do the stuff, and the city's going to coordinate it? Why in the world would the city have a hand in selling this to the population at large other than just justifying the actions that the city's taking?
You're correct, again. Recommendation would not be for the city to run any type of program such as that. Recommendation would be to hire an experienced, you know, community-based or-like operator. The recommendation comes at this juncture as the city contemplates what its role might be in a navigation center in helping to engage early on with the community around some of the challenges of homelessness, rather than waiting until a program is, a building is maybe potentially purchased and a lead provider is hired, for lack of a better word. I would argue, for also, lack of a better phrase, that's getting behind the eight ball. So this was more of a timing endeavor of a recommendation, and it would be designed to coincide with existing communication strategies that the city already may have with respect to any potential efforts that it might have ongoing. But it is also, again, largely, in my opinion, and I think in others, councilmember, it's in part to educate, you know, the community about the problems, which we may not agree on at its core, but that is also a big piece of what it is. And personally, I've been part of one of these endeavors, and I do believe it can help and make a difference in the community in terms of helping to understand some of the challenges that people experiencing homelessness are having.
Right. So I totally understand the communication of having a community conversation on homelessness and proposed solutions and all that, but we're way past that, you know, we're way down the road on that. We've got concrete actions that we have taken and then that are scheduled for now till, you know, a year and a half from now or two years from now or whatever. Who knows whether we'll be able to meet those timelines or not? I understand those are proposed and aspirational and whatnot, but we're not talking about engaging the community about, "Hey, what do you see as the problem here? What do you think are the right solutions? What are that?" I mean, we're already past that. We're talking about just kind of marketing. Here's what our solutions are, and we want you to know. And I guess I'm questioning the value in that, because there'd be an expenditure to do that. And to what end or what value does that bring?
Well, I'm going to try not to use the word "marketing" too much in my response. I would actually suggest that the marketing side of it is maybe more in strategy two of establishing that culture of authentic communication with the community. So some things like possibly considering establishing a website with a dashboard that talks about progress and efforts and utilizes data that the city's collecting to show what's been happening. Maybe something like a town hall-style regular meeting with community members to talk about what the city is doing to work on addressing the problem of homelessness and how it's playing out within their communities, their neighborhoods, their areas. To me, that would be more of the marketing side. I would argue that strategy one is more about awareness and education, which, again, I may be splitting hairs.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I understand. You're probably right about that. I guess my fear is, is that how do you do it accurately? Because The Rising does it. It isn't even close to accurate. I mean, it's puff piece. How does the city avoid being in the puff piece business to pat themselves on the back and say, "Look, we're doing it all right"? How, you know, in the absence of local media, which we have very, very little of, you know, the city has the capacity to kind of own the whole narrative. And how do we, how does this ensure that it's an accurate narrative? Because the city has a vested interest, a stake in success, right? We're going to spend a whole bunch of taxpayers' money here, and if we said, "Well, to be truthful, we didn't really accomplish much, but we spent a bunch", obviously, that's never going to happen. But that's a possible outcome. That's very possible that that's the outcome of this. And so, you know, this kind of stuff where in a plan is overt kind of boosterism of this particular endorsement of this particular idea, this particular course of action, I have difficulty with when it's government doing it. Now, look, if this is a business that's doing this for profit or a nonprofit that's doing it for no profit, and they want to toot their own horn, they should do that. But it's really not government's job to do that. I would much prefer, in a strategy like that, to see this, if not out of there, at least minimized. And, you know, I think, again, with all of this type of stuff, the first responsibility government has here is to be honest. And whether it's, you know, subsidized housing or homeless services, we can't hide things. We need to say the truth. And so I think we should be completely transparent and honest at all times, but I don't think we need to fluff it and overdo that. So anyway, just my feedback, I would, as you look at that kind of stuff, just keep that in mind. I mean, my fellow councilmembers may feel totally different, but as you look at that, I would just encourage you to keep that in mind, that there's a kind of, to me, it appears to be a slippery slope.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. What I'm seeing here is government transparency. We are not hiding our ideas and forward thoughts under a bushel basket. We are out there saying, "Here is our strategy. Here is what we're thinking. Here is the direction we're taking our program", not having a tote board that says X number of days since the last accident. That's not what we're doing here. What we're doing here is sharing with the public our thoughts, our strategy. We're being transparent with you, the taxpayers, on how we are responsibly using money. We're not asking to build a program. We are saying we will be the facilitators of actionable items of a program. And that's what we need to have the focus on and have you keep our toes to the fire to keep on task with that. And the only way we can do that is through open and honest and transparent government communication. And that's what I see as the objective here in this strategy. Thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Yeah, I would like to say, first of all, about The Rising, that councilmember Marriott has an opinion about them, and I have an opinion about them as well, including that they have been used as an example for other navigation centers throughout the metro region, including recovery works. And so I think that they do have statistics that other agencies find useful, so much so that they will implement it. So there's clear differences and debate on council about that particular agency. One thing I wanted to ask you again is that on the community survey, you said it was over half of Arvada residents said they wanted the city to take leadership on addressing homelessness?
Oh, boy, you're going to get me in trouble. I don't think, if I said that, I don't think that that's what I meant. But I think over half of city residents indicated a desire for more programming to address homelessness, not specifically indicating that for the city to take leadership on it.
But having a plan to address the issue? Or homelessness is one of the top concerns residents have? Over half of them say that, right? Okay, so that's that point of information. And then you are also sharing that one of the major obstacles to having a plan or addressing the issue is the misconceptions on what actually works in addressing the issue? That's like one of the key challenges?
That was on my slide of challenges?
No, I don't think you worded it that way, but I think, is that a challenge that people do not understand, like, what the data actually says about, you know, housing first versus treatment? Which approach works, like empirically, from other cities, from other places in Colorado, across the nation? Isn't there a knowledge gap? And that's a challenge to implementing something?
Yes, I do think that that's getting at kind of the core of strategy one of the coordinated campaign, is to help provide opportunities to narrow that knowledge gap, to help the community understand more about the causes, literally put faces with the challenge for people who are willing. That has also been a very effective approach, and helping them to tell their stories, which is hard for someone to do. All of those things, I think, help narrow the knowledge gap. And yes, I would argue that if the knowledge gap is narrowed, it will help with our prior discussion around the challenges of "Not in My Backyard".
Right, and so that's why this goal is around increasing awareness and understanding of the different dynamics and the strategies that are empirically effective, data-driven strategies that we could help organize as a city.
It could be around the data-driven and best-practice strategies. The coordinated messaging campaigns, also getting back to councilmember Marriott's question, how does the city do it and not just spend money, you know, with something that's not effective? There's certainly a vetting process that would be encouraged, you know, for any particular consultant to be selected. And good, quality consultants will utilize data to develop coordinated messaging campaigns. And, again, utilizing that approach would not necessarily espouse specific solutions, per se. That, again, I would argue, is probably more under strategy two, depending on what specific solutions the city council and the city determine to move forward with.
Okay. Yeah, I think that it's really important to have something specific around communication as this is a high, a very important issue for our residents. So I'm glad that you're including it and are going to be addressing it in the ways councilmember Davis is talking about transparency and accountability to our community about what works and what doesn't work and what the city is planning to do and is doing.
Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you. I will move on to goal number five, which, again, as previously referenced, is around data collection. So establishing data collection and reporting methods to support continuous improvement. Not saying that the city's not focused on continuous improvement, but as, again, mentioned earlier, collecting data specifically, uniquely, to the city of Arvada has been challenging. So these are efforts, these strategies are designed to help create key performance indicators that a broader, you know, stakeholder group agrees are deemed necessary to help measure success, utilizing those to determine what's working, what's not, to help make changes and evolve. And that's really leading into strategy two of establishing that culture of continuous improvement related to homelessness data and outcomes reporting. So establishing the KPIs and then using those KPIs to understand what's working and what's not, and utilizing that in a quality improvement manner. I will say that that also very much goes back to goal four, to councilmember Ambrose's question around data. This helps to feed into those efforts, as well as some of the earlier conversations, specifically coming to mind. specifically coming to mind, Goal Three, around how the city might contemplate its commitment, if you will, to permanent supportive housing and, and, and additional units. These, these data sources and these KPIs would help to become starting points or elevated opportunities for assessing those, those goals and those approaches as well. So I, I mentioned that I was going to spend a little bit more time on, on Navigation Center and, and this, and this work, because this is, in, in a few different ways, this is probably a centerpiece of, of recommended actions. It is also, as noted, it is a costly endeavor, and we'll talk a little bit about that as well. And so I, I, I pushed this kind of to the end, to be able to spend some concentrated time on the Navigation Center, which I know has been discussed by council off and on over time. But I want to, I want to stress that, as I mentioned, navigation centers are still a relatively new intervention approach. It's largely thought that the first navigation center was created in 2015 in San Francisco. And because of its relative newness, there also are no official definitions of what a navigation center is or is not, which is why I'm referring to common elements. So I, I have looked at a variety of different navigation center programs across not only this region as they're being created, and what their current and aspirational service array looks like, but also those across, across different areas of the country. So I'm referring to this as common elements because there is no official definition. But I want to start with the, the idea that navigation centers have 24/7 shelter, that they utilize non-congregate or semi-private rooms. And again, none of this is gospel, per se, but many common elements of navigation centers have the 24/7 sheltering element to it. And the non-congregate or semi-private rooms is, is referring to the opposite of congregate, which congregate is generally defined or, or seen as one large room, for example, with multiple mats or cots, 50, 100 maybe in a room. This is providing a little bit more privacy, a little bit more of an opportunity to, to rest. And also, as mentioned before, the 24/7 element is about not having to leave that, that shelter bed space every morning and then come seek it out again each evening. So there's some continuity there that is helpful in building relationships and working on plans to move forward.
Councilmember Marriott.
Let me ask you a question just about that. So let's say this comes to fruition and you produce a navigation center with non-congregate or semi-private rooms, and so it's a better experience than a congregate shelter. Given the mobility that's available to people these days, even with his, I mean, you can beg on the street corner and get an Uber ride in short amount of time, what stops all the people in congregate shelters from just deciding, "Well, that's uptown, that's a better deal, I'm just going to go there"? And the homeless people who are in Arvada still aren't housed. But anything you create, you fill, you fill it to the brim, and, you know, the worst shelter situation in the region gets less full, and the best one's full all the time. How do you, how do you operate to prevent that from happening? I mean, if somebody shows up and goes, "I got nowhere to be, I've been sleeping on the street, take me in, you have space, take me in", you take them in. And I don't think that you have to prove that, "I've been here for a while", or "I used to live here, or my parents lived here", or whatever. It's just, so how do you operate and just keep that from happening? To just...
Well, it's a, it's a good question, and it's not a specific scenario that's contemplated in any of these recommended actions. That would be the, the operator's job, but I will, I will do my best to respond. It, a lot of it goes back to the very first strategy under Goal One, which was about developing housing-focused outreach services. So if you're engaging and building relationships with people experiencing homelessness in the Arvada community, this would be an opportunity to then work to get them placed into the navigation center's sheltering component. So there would be a prioritization, if you will, based on the relationships that have been established within this community. The other response I would have goes back to, right now, there is, in some phase of development, five other navigation centers across the region, working on also developing some semblance of what I hope will be high-quality residential or sheltering options. So if the concern is, say, Arvada says, "Let's do a navigation center with sheltering", and they build the Cadillac version, and everybody comes because they want to be part of the Cadillac sheltering option, I am optimistic that there will be other high-quality programs also being developed across the region, which will then help to minimize some of that, that idea of chasing the highest quality. And then, lastly, would be, there's only going to be a finite number of people who can be served at any point in time. So, so, you know, there, there would be, you know...
I guess I understand that. It brings up the disparate goals in this solving homelessness problem, you know? I think, for some, solving homelessness means that that guy that's, you know, got his shopping cart there on the corner, that we're going to lift him up and make his life better and help him, you know, whatever, whatever trauma they've had, and whatever ails them, that we're going to help him with that and fix that and cure that, and they're going to go on to a better life. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. That could be one goal of solving homelessness. But another goal of solving homelessness might be that the merchant in Old Town who has, you know, a pile of shit in his front door every day when he goes to open up his front door, doesn't have that again. Like, his solution for homelessness is different from the, from the others. And in an approach where we're just going to take everybody who wants a bed in the shelter till we're full, and then when we're full, we're full, I can see very easily leading to, you're helping these individuals with their homeless situation, and some of them may benefit from that. But the merchant in Old Town, or the family that walks to St. Anne's to take their kids to school in the morning, see no solution to homelessness for them. That they haven't been positively impacted at all. And I think that puts you squarely into, you know, the original thing said, is the city's not a human services organization. But it puts you squarely into that, "Yeah, you are, that's because that's what you're doing. You're here to lift individual humans up. You're not here to improve the community's, the community's situation with homelessness, unless there's some operational way". And I, I, listen, I get it's difficult. I, I don't have a, I don't have a plan for you or anything like that, and I understand it would be the operator. But I think if it's not contemplated, as you go in and decisions are made, I think, again, you can make bad decisions when you have bad assumptions. And, look, we're Arvada, we do things better than Lakewood does. We're way better than Adams County, you know? We're better than Jefferson County. If they're doing this, we're going to do that plus, you know? And I, I think sober decision-making needs to happen there about, what exactly is the goal here? And what's the outcome of these decisions we're making? Because I totally foresee us building the best place. That's what we do. Go to any of our parks. Our parks are the best parks, right? Our trails are the best trails. Our streets are not the best. But the other things the city does, we do, at a high level, we get an A on our report card. I have no doubt that if we're going to get in the human services business and we're going to have a navigation center, ours is going to be an A, too. And are, are, are we counterproductive by doing that? That as we go, are we better to make some decisions and maybe make ours a C or a D, and not, not to be the place that people really want to be, but it's serviceable for those who, who need it? And the goal, hopefully, would be to get the people off of our streets and into a better situation, and you kind of solve homelessness for them and for the other people who are negatively impacted by it.
And I don't see, I don't see the, the, the solutions put in place are mutually exclusive of, of, of those. I, I don't think, I, of course, merchants don't want somebody sleeping in their doorway and having to step over that every morning amidst other challenges with respect to that. I also don't think that person necessarily wants to be sleeping there. And so, again, focusing on the outreach side of things, there are going to be prioritized areas where I would hope, where an outreach team would start to focus its efforts in a way to create a win-win with respect to how it can serve the person experiencing homelessness, but also the business community and the community as a whole. And I would push back gently to say, if, if a C or D graded facility were created, that may not meet the perceived needs of people who are experiencing homelessness, so they may not opt to utilize that service. And therefore, then, we are in somewhat of a spiral of challenge that I don't think the city really wants to be in. So I appreciate that the city does everything at an A grade, and I would encourage you, if you decide to move forward, to do this with a, with a grade-A level effort as well.
Fair enough. I would just respectfully maybe disagree with you softly a little bit, since you pushed back nice and softly.
Councilmember Davis.
So I think that maybe Councilmember Marriott has, it's two-pronged. The first one is if there is a higher-valued shelter, wouldn't everybody just go to that? Not necessarily, because you've got to think about transportation and, and that type of thing. I do know that there were guardrails in Denver, that they took Denver residents first. If you prove that you live in the city and county of Denver, they took Arvada homeless folks because they knew there was nowhere to, to send them back to Jefferson County or to Arvada. So I know that for a fact that those kinds of things do happen. They're not turning people away just to turn them away and fill beds just to fill beds. So the, the operator definitely can build those guardrails in. That's number one. Number two, we have said consistently that we will be the purveyor of, of information, that we will be the facilitator. We didn't say we were building any shelters. And what you're saying here is, "These are the common elements." That's fantastic. That shelter, we as a city, we said we wouldn't, didn't need to build it, but what we can do is maybe look over the fence and see what other, what other agencies are doing, and making sure that they meet our A-plus, AAA standards, so that when we send people there, we navigate them there from our NAV Center, that we feel confident that folks are going to be serviced properly. I, I'm going to stick with that, that we are the purveyors of information, we are not the builders of buildings. We're going to, we're going to do things, and we're going to do things right, but in no, nowhere has, have I seen where we're building anything. What we're being told is, "This is what we should look for in a satisfactory NAV Center."
Thank you very much. Please continue.
So, again, other common elements would include day sheltering options, so opportunity to rest, similar to things like meals, offering meals and laundry, but, you know, other clo, you know, clothing, you know, computers to connect, which, again, leads to things like employment and workforce services. Case management and housing navigation are, are common elements. Again, the idea of a navigation center, the, the word "navigation" is to help them navigate through and on to something better. So the idea is not to create a place where people are, are residing indefinitely without solutions to move forward. So case management, housing navigation is an important aspect. Physical and behavioral health services, substance abuse treatment services, again, employment and workforce, benefits acquisition and support. And then, at the bottom, are, are two, again, common elements, but a little bit more challenging, I think, to bring online, not to say that any of this is necessarily a cakewalk, but medical respite beds and housing units are often components you find attached with navigation centers. So you have an, an area where you can receive and be provided services. For some people, they have shelter beds where they can reside as they're working on their next steps. And sometimes those next steps could include actually moving into housing units that are attached, whether physically or programmatically, to a navigation center. So with respect to this action strategy and the idea of the city helping to consider moving forward with the navigation center, the first-phase recommendations start at the top and work around clockwise. Obviously, that means identifying and determining how to acquire an existing property that has appropriate zoning. Appropriate zoning is very important because of the sheltering component recommendation. And you all are much, probably much more knowledgeable about zoning and land use issues in Arvada than I am, but I don't think, with the urgency of, of the issues and the challenges ahead of us, that, that any navigation center would want to contemplate moving into a building that has to go through a rezoning process, which would take quite a bit of time and, and effort. Again, recommendation is to prioritize the 24/7 shelter beds as an early-on priority with establishing of the navigation center, with the importance of that gap and narrowing that gap in the community. We've already talked a little bit about the non-congregate or semi-private rooms. Semi-private could be defined in a number of ways, but I've seen it done very effectively with larger rooms that might have three or four persons in a room with some type of divider that creates personal space and opportunities for, for them to, to create a space that is kind of their own while they're residing there. The, the idea of non-congregate, 15 to 20 rooms for approximately 45 to 60 people, 12,000 to 15,000 square feet for shelter and adequate common area space and storage, those recommendations are, they come in alignment with the operating pro forma that's been developed to suggest what the cost could be annually of operating a navigation center. Those were assumptions that were utilized in some efforts to bring a navigation center forward in the city of Arvada a few years ago that did not move forward. And so, in, in order to create alignment of the pro forma operating, the operating pro forma and the, and the elements of this navigation center, wanted to use some consistency in those recommendations. And to give some idea of about what, what space would be required to give some idea of what type of facility or building might be needed to start to develop those types So additional phasing would also be recommended to include integrated physical and behavioral health services, substance abuse treatment services, day sheltering resources, meals, laundry, shower, resting places, as already mentioned, and additional services developed in collaboration with other providers, with an incentive for providers to be co-located and onsite. One important aspect, I believe, in navigation center efficacy is around developing strong collaborations and partnerships. There is a lot, there are a lot of services that are needed to be able to be provided at a navigation center, eventually, even after it's being phased in. Arguably, too many services that any one provider can provide on their own. And there are, there is expertise in high-quality services being provided in the community. And so it's very important to consider how a navigation center is not duplicating efforts already in, in existence at the navigation center, and creating incentives for existing providers to co-locate their services there and really create economies of scale and maximize efficiency of services at that particular site. Again, medical respite and housing units would be even a longer-term contemplation, because, again, arguably, the barriers to making that, that happen are a little bit higher and all longer term, where, again... again, these other elements, again, arguably, could be developed a little bit more on a streamlined or sooner or quicker approach. This is a, this is a summary of some funding opportunities that I do believe exist, designed, you know, not, of course, to put sole burden on, on the city for what is necessary to have in terms of a collaborative effort, not only from the service provision, but also multiple sources of funding will need to be identified and, and secured in order to operate a navigation center, in my opinion. So, starting at the local level, though, obviously, the city of Arvada as a collaborative funder and potentially considering any opportunities to reallocate any of its current spending. Again, mentioned that in the more detailed report, the estimate is for 2024, about 2.2 to $2.5 million of spending either directly out of the city's budget or through pass-through funds, but orchestrated in some effort through, through the city. I have, I am not making any determinations or recommendations on any reallocations of those dollars. I'm just simply saying that there, there could be a value proposition of looking at that if, if and how the city determines to move forward with some of these solutions. There certainly are efforts ongoing, working with Adams and Jefferson Counties, as they're, you know, certainly the majority of Arvada is in Jefferson County, but a portion is in Adams County. And I do believe there are opportunities to work collaboratively with both on funding opportunities. We have foundations throughout the, the region and even possibly beyond that, that would be interested, in my opinion, in providing funding for either capital or operating for navigation center efforts. At the state level, through the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, there are a number of different notice of funding opportunities that might be available, not only to, to potentially help with some capital offsets, but also with some operating dollars. They also, that includes Proposition 123, and there are some, some forthcoming efforts through the Colorado Department of Local Affairs to push a funding process out that would grant some Proposition 123 monies for operating dollars as well. And, and then lastly, Medicaid, which we know is not necessarily state, but it does operate at this, at this point through a state entity. And there are events moving forward that should increase opportunities to be able, for a provider, to be able to bill and receive reimbursement of Medicaid dollars for homelessness services. At the federal level, and again, much of this does flow through or pass through either local or state, there are still, believe it or not, some ARPA dollars available, and there have been some interesting, unique ways of, of creating longer-term opportunities to spend those ARPA dollars down so that they're not necessarily running up against the, the deadlines set forth by, by the federal government. And then there are other federal grant opportunities that may come through Departments of Health and Human Services, Housing and Development, SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health, I'm going to butcher that one, but also a, a, a sub-department of, under Health and Human Services. So, there are other federal funding opportunities that a qualified provider would know about and would also be able to help, you know, lead applications for efforts such as that. Of course, having partnership with the city in that, in those application processes would, would undoubtedly be advantageous as well.
Councilmember Frey?
Thank you. I would also just add, the, the VA would probably be a funding source just on the federal level. I'm sure we'll be dealing with veterans. The $2.2 million that you, to $2.5 million that you had mentioned, what part, where's the bulk of that money going towards in the navigation services? So, you had a bunch of different options on there.
Yeah. So, to clarify, it's not going to navigation services currently.
Okay.
So, I would, but I would say, and I may look to, to Don for a little bit of help, but I do believe the bulk of spending probably comes through the police department and a lot of that through the core team.
Okay.
Yep.
I thought you said that the $2.2 million was what it would cost annually for navigation?
No.
No?
Sorry. I, I actually totally glazed over that important point, so I apologize, Councilmember. The operating pro forma for a navigation center right now is estimating about $3 million annually.
$3 million, okay.
The $2.2 to $2.5 million encompasses an estimate, I think it's a pretty good estimate, of spending that the city will be making directly through general fund or other pass-through grant opportunities this calendar year.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Sorry for, for confusing.
All right, good, thanks.
Councilmember Marriott?
Yes, a question I have is, how scalable is this plan? So, let me give you, for instance, looks to me like the first year of this plan, the expenditure necessary is somewhere between $10 and $20 million. And then, each year after that, it's less than that, but maybe as low as $3 million, but could be more than that annually. And, let's say through all these funding sources, you come up with half that on either the first year or any given year. Is the plan scalable where you can do half the work with half the money? Or, do you need to spend 80% of the money to be able to do half the work, or you've got to spend it all, or it's not worth doing at all?
The, the operating pro forma was developed with, with the idea that it was, let me say, I guess it was conservative in its assumptions. So, it was a comprehensive staffing model. So, in answer to your question, I do think that if there were funding challenges, there could be conversations with the lead provider about what, what this means in terms of scaling back services or opportunities to try to secure other funding. You mentioned in year one, maybe about 10, 10 million?
Well, some-
Is that, is that, is that including?
Yeah, I think fir- first year, you've got to acquire a property, right?
Yeah, sure.
And then you've got to remodel it, I would assume, or make it usable for this purpose. And you've got to equip it, and you've got, you know, the costs associated with, you know, everything that it takes to take and stand something up. And I don't see any way that that happens for less than $10 million. It's probably somewhere between 10 and 20, I would guess. And then, once you own it, of course, then each year after that, it's, it's a bit less. But, with the inflationary environment we're in, obviously, that's accelerating as well. And so, the question just is, is if you can't raise all the money, do you say, okay, we don't do anything? Or do you say, well, we're successful at coming up with about half, can we still effectively serve half as many people as we were talking about doing? Or does it require the whole expenditure to be able to serve people at all? Or is there somewhere in between? I mean, a common, you know, I, I, I know about ski lift, ski lifts and ski lift chairs, you know, and it's like, costs you 75% of the money to not carry anybody up the hill, and then, you know, each person incrementally adds very little after, after that. So, is this the same way, or can you actually scale this kind of linearly so that if, if this part is unsuccessful or not as successful as contemplated, that you can still do it, just do it at a different rate?
Yeah, it certainly wasn't a recommendation that it was all or nothing, meaning, you know, the, the full amount. But, the, the operating pro forma was attached, again, to some of those other assumptions that I mentioned on the prior slide to give it, you know, that alignment with, with what were real efforts at, at one point in time. So, this wasn't, you know, this was very relevant, I, I would, I would argue, in the community, given those, those conversations that were occurring. But, I think any experienced provider or lead provider, while certainly never wanting to have to contemplate how to operate with less-than-ideal level of funding, they're usually pretty adept at, at being able to do that. And so, it is something, and it would be something in the middle if, for some reason, that could be achieved.
Could be achieved, okay. One last question is, is contemplate, you know, a nonprofit or some other entity operating this, you know, being the provider or the operator. I guess there's an operator, and then there's providers of services that may or may not be the same people.
Yeah.
But, it is the, is the possibility exists that, rather than being paid to do this, that they bring money to the table to do this? In other words, they're a nonprofit, they should have some kind of fundraising or some kind of financial structure to them, and that in exchange for doing this, you know, getting to operate out of our facility, they bring some of the funding that it takes to operate it? Or is the contemplation that, no, instead you have to pay somebody to come and do this, and they, while they may be a nonprofit, they have, you know, all the expenses that a for-profit company would have, and you've got to, you know, pay them for what they do, plus their overhead kind of thing?
And, and I think it's going to be more of needing to compensate a provider. I can't speak for all providers. I mean, certainly, many community-based organizations have reserves or other means, you know, that they've established with their boards of directors on how they're going to spend those dollars. So, you know, if, sometimes it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility that organizations would be setting dollars aside for key strategic expansion opportunities, for example. But, I, I would say that most organizations are not, as you probably know, sitting on large amounts of money, just be, just waiting to be invited to the table to spend it. So, there would need to be some element of investment in that. But, again, as, as, as noted here, there are funding sources, broadly speaking, that would be largely driven by a lead provider. For example, Medicaid billing would, would be something that a lead provider with that experience or capacity would bring, and would know how to scale up operations to be able to draw down more Medicaid dollars. Not saying that Medicaid is, you know, it, it often needs to be supplemented as a funding source, but, but again, good quality providers know what it takes to braid funding together. But, I would be remiss if I didn't say that having that strong partnership with the city, if the city chose to take this on, and defining what that partnership looks like, whether it's in terms of investment of financial resources or other means, is going to be an important aspect, I think, of having a lead provider come to the table and being willing to take on some of those risks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Yes, the funding question was something I wanted to give feedback towards when looking at the plan, especially Goal 1, Strategy 2, Steps 5, 9, and 10. Because, the way that the plan is presented right now is that it makes it very clear that the next step doesn't happen unless there's funding secured for that next step to happen. But, I think, it's, it's a little unclear because I know since the council gave direction to the city to work on homelessness, that you all are still in talks and securing this funding. So, that's why you can't at this planned presentation present, you know, here's how much a NAV Center is going to cost, and here's the money from ARPA, and the money from this county, and the money from that county, and the money from this, you know, because those talks are still ongoing. And it's actually in the plan as to when those dollars are actually going to be secured, but that those, basically that those things are happening right now, right?
Well, I, I guess I'll clarify a couple of things. I am, I am not hired by the city to negotiate or broker funding sources. So, part, part of what I was asked to do is to help identify those sources, which, again, I will say, the city knows of many of those sources. And, and if the city is going to be moving forward with something, it would be incumbent on the city to be brokering those, those funding sources.
So, maybe it's more of a Don comment, that this is, this is what we're doing right now, yeah.
Yes, and, and just before, before Don says more, I, I think in the steps that you're referring to as well, you know, finalizing and determining what operating budgets are and what capital budgets are for purchase or renovation, to Councilmember Marriott's earlier comment, those are important steps to take. But, but the work that's been developed so far are, again, estimates of, of costs. Those would have to be negotiated conversations with the lead provider or provider consortium.
I think just specifically to answer your question, those things are happening in parallel to this work right now. So, we are looking at the funding sources and conversations. I mean, I think you did a good job of summarizing exactly what we're doing right now.
Okay, great. And then, my, my feedback then is, I would like more differentiation between what is like external pass-through dollars that we're trying to secure and what we would say, okay, this is going to be internal dollars, like Arvada taxpayer-supported general fund. So, differentiating between that, and then also differentiating between, this is like a startup cost, this is what it's going to cost to get this off the ground versus an ongoing cost that's aligned with our 10-year fiscal plan.
Yeah, we'll, we'll know all that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
Well, so, this is, this is the end of, of the slides at least.
Do you have ten more?
No, I don't have 10 more. I mean, you might have 10 more questions or 100 more questions, which is fine, but, but this is the end of, of the slides. So, again, next steps are, which you've been giving tonight, you know, your guidance, your direction, you know, obviously determining what, what moves forward and what doesn't is, is, is critical. But, I want, want to stress that, as, as many of you noted, this is a relative short-term implementation timeframe that's, that's recommended. So, it's through 2026, which is in, in part to, you know, respond to urgency, which, which has been very clear and evident in conversations and throughout the community. But, also, this is an ever-changing landscape. And, and so, needing to really kind of adapt and modify to that, which is also part of this. So, the action plan was developed to help, hopefully, get, get some traction, you know, to be able to move some things forward. It's not designed to be the end-all or to say that this is any type of perfect solution, because we know if the perfect solution existed, we wouldn't have been meeting here tonight together. It does need to be, in my opinion, in my recommendation, it needs to be a dynamic living document. It needs to be assessed, it needs to be evaluated with regular updates and revisions. That goes back to that continuous improvement approach, using the data and the key performance indicators and other information that's presented. And, and I guess too, I, I know that, well, your, your jobs are big, and they're, and, and you have large, significant decisions to make about a lot of things. And certainly, a big part of what you do all the time is assess and evaluate risk for anything that you're making a decision on. And, and yet, what I'm asking you to consider is that there certainly is risk with respect to any implementation or movement forward that the city may, may take and/or support. But, as I think many, many people have said before, and Councilmember Ambrose, and I think you alluded to this earlier, I would also argue, though, that the biggest risk is doing nothing. And so, I, again, I, I commend you all for, for, you know, asking the city team to bring this forward, and your consideration of how you move forward is critically important. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight and talk this through. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Marriott, were you requesting to speak? I saw you push a button, but it didn't light up again. Okay.
I, I didn't push it, but I will.
All right. Well, if you didn't push it, then I just wanted to make sure, because you were the first one to make a motion. Councilmember Ambrose?
Yeah, thank you so much for this presentation. I really appreciate your experience in setting up one of the first, you know, permanent supportive housing, family tree projects, and all the options that you considered through and working with the city to be able to. You interviewed each one of us, all the information gathering, so I appreciate this comp- this presentation, but also the comprehensive report that was circulated around. And also thanks to Don for taking the initiative on, or not the initiative, but taking the lead on this and, and delivering something that we can really sink our teeth into and make some important decisions about. So, thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember Marriott?
Just want to make a couple, couple concluding thoughts. I think I want to be clear about a couple of things. I, I know in this last part of this presentation, Scott, you mentioned something about- I, I know in this last part of this presentation, Scott, you mentioned something about, you know, we're currently spending 2.2, 2.5 million dollars on homelessness out of the taxpayers' funds and that maybe some of that can be diverted to, to this cause and provide some of the funding. I think that's good thinking. My initial reaction to that is, is that it's probably not very practical, given that the bulk of our expenditures are from the core team and having a navigation center isn't going to take away the people that are on our streets and the misbehavior that they do, that the core team largely deals with all day, every day in their regular thing. And I think having a navigation center won't stop the flow of people back and forth and into Old Town on the train and the drug dealing that happens and the drug use that happens and, and all of that. And so while something might be able to be repurposed, I don't see that a navigation center magically means you no longer need a core team and you can repurpose that. And we would have those police officers doing something else anyway. So as far as repurposable, I just want to be clear that I don't think that's much of a, it's good that's in there because I think we need to consider everything, but I don't think there's much practicality to that. This thing's missing one giant thing for me, however. It's the elephant in the room. And that is I don't see anything in this plan or in the, the narrative, the more in-depth narrative or the timeline that talks about closing down the homeless services provided by the Rising Church. And to me, that's a huge miss and, and a likely outcome of the taxpayers of Arvada are going to spend some money, who knows how much, maybe ideally not that much, but certainly there's some. I mean, we have FTEs that are paid by the taxpayers who are going to be involved in this and all that. So certainly the taxpayers are going to pay some. And we may house a bunch of homeless folks and we may lift their lives and make them better. And we may also have the situation in Old Town absolutely no different than it is today. And if that's the outcome, this will have been an abject failure. And the only solution to that is that if this can be and becomes implemented, the inappropriate homeless outreach that's happening in Old Town has to stop. And I completely disagree with the premise that we can't make them stop now because there's no alternative. If we just had an alternative, then we could, then they, they couldn't do it. I think we could make them stop now, we choose not to. But if we do this and then we don't make them stop, holy moly, have we done a disservice to every merchant in Old Town, every resident that lives close by Old Town and every visitor to Old Town who their experience is no improvement whatsoever. Our core team will have no better working conditions or no better situations to deal with. And I think, I, I think, you know, whether it's in the plan or not, to me, it's completely unacceptable to make these kinds of public dollar expenditures without improving the situation for everybody, not just the people who are sleeping on the corner, who will get their, their situation improved by a navigation center, but the business owners in Old Town, they deserve to have their situation improved too. So do the residents, so do the visitors. Everybody deserves something out of this type of expenditure and that ought to be in the plan. And I don't know where any of that is, but, but it's a big failure if that's not absolutely clear that that's one of the outcomes if this course of action takes place. So anyway, I just want to encourage, encourage you and everybody to contemplate that and think of that. And if the Rising people are watching, I would encourage them to understand that that's a likely outcome of something like this and that if they want to be involved, they might ought to be involved in something like this instead of cowboy-ing it up the way they currently do. And that no matter what, that's got to be a bottom line. So anyway, my final thought.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Mormon.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, Scott, thank you so much for the work that you've done on this. There's a lot here and I really appreciate the comprehensiveness of it and the evidence, evidence-based approach that you have taken. We're not the first city to be wrestling with this challenge. And I think there are lots of lessons out there to be learned and you've, you've done the work to go out and try to assess what those lessons are and what are the best practices. And so I appreciate you bringing that together and I think a very, very thorough plan that I feel like is something that is actionable, that we can utilize. And obviously it's not going to be something that we're going to be able to do overnight. And I think you've mapped it out, you've created a pathway for us to figure out how we're going to get to where we want to go. And so I really appreciate that process that, that you have done in, in this plan. As you have said and others have said tonight, we can't continue just doing what we're doing now. The status quo is not going to improve our situation, it's not going to improve the impacts and challenges that our community faces and that we need to have to be doing something different. And I think, and something that's effective. And, and I think you've given us a proposal tonight that we can look at seriously to, to make those changes and to actually implement something. The community impacts that we've talked about tonight aren't going to improve without opportunities for individuals facing homelessness to have a place to go and to get the services they need. And that's first and foremost, and you've shown that here in this plan, that that is what the, the primary objective is. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Councilmember Pfeifer, do you want to go?
I just again echo, I appreciate it. This is not an easy conversation for anyone and if it was, we'd been out of here an hour and a half ago. But as you can see, it's, it's a matter we all have to deal with. I appreciate everyone's conversations tonight up here and Scott, you did a great job. And Don, thanks for sharing that a little early for us to digest it and kind of see what happens when you leave it too early, maybe? We, we get a lot of questions. But, but it's, it's all good information and look, we've got to push through something and something's got to shake loose and try to see where we end up going. I, I mean, we're going to adapt, block and tackle this subject and it may not, it may morph. And so we just have to be open to successes and failures that will both happen. And lastly, I want to make a comment, the homeless is not just in Old Town, John, it's, it's in all of Arvada in some way or another. And, you know, I get it's most visible in Old Town and I get it impacts our economic center and, and I think we have an idea of what we can do there as a, as a team. But there are problems under, the underpasses. We've had a lot of structural issues, we've had, you know, people just, on Sheridan, you know, I'm thinking of that side road, but the, what, the point is, is it's everywhere. And we got to have a solution that helps folks, not just in Old Town, but in the whole city and maybe in northern Jefferson County. And so I appreciate at least we leaned forward on this conversation and let's see what the next steps take us and we'll look to the team to help implement some of this. So good job, Scott, and good job to the team that got involved.
All right. Thank you. I'll echo my colleagues' comments. We want to thank the team, this was a lot of hard work, in particular you, Mr. Wick, for your leadership on this issue internally and you, Mr. Spears, for working with us to deliver this great project. I'm very pleased with the report and the recommendations and that we have tangible steps forward. Thank the council tonight for its thoughtful questions and comments, even if we've been here about three hours on this. Mr. Spears, I hope your feet are okay. And with that, I will turn it back over to the team, Ms. Gillis.
Scott Shields.
Scott Shields. Spears, that's right, Mr. Spears is a business owner in Old Town. My brain flipped it, I apologize. Mr. Shields, thank you, I hope your feet are okay.
No comments.
All right, Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, your honor.
All right, we stand adjourned.